I would like to call this meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. We, just as a quick FYI, we met at 6:30 today in closed session to receive legal advice on litigation regarding E and R Services versus the City of Tacoma Park. And so we are now moving forward into our regular meeting. But I do just want to make sure that the clerk calls the roll for this meeting in that we had a couple of folks who were not present in the actual closing and the vote for the closed session. So could you please call the roll?
Mayor Searcy?
Here.
Councilmember Fulter?
Present.
Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Gibson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present, but my mic's not working.
Yeah, she, I think her battery's dead.
Okay.
Councilmember Small?
Chilling, never illing, in the place it be.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember Hansak grabbing that next mic. Although you may be, we'll make another one for you.
Okay, awesome.
Perfect, alright, so there has been, just triple checking, no changes to the agenda for today. We have no matters for the record. And just as a quick run through, today we will be discussing second reading ordinance approving FY23 budget amendment number five, as well as council priorities. On Wednesday, March the 22nd, we will have a presentation of the Police Department's annual report, and that will start at 6:30. Our regular meeting will then proceed at 7:30. We are slated to have a youth council update, as well as a presentation on a financial forecast for the city. We will have a voting session on a resolution adopting council priorities, as well as a work session providing an overview of the FY 2024 budget process. The council will not meet on March 29th. The council will also not meet on Wednesday, April the 5th, as that is when Passover begins at sunset. On, we're gonna have a special meeting on Monday, April the 10th, and that is where we will be discussing, the county will come and discuss the minor master plan preliminary recommendations. And then on April the 12th, at 6:30, we will have a, another closed session. That is to receive legal advice regarding litigation pertaining to the opioid settlement. Our regular meeting will presume at 7:30. We will have an Arbor Day proclamation, as well as a presentation of the city manager's proposed FY 2024 budget. We'll also have work sessions on 37 Oswego Avenue, as well as the procurement of police in-car video cameras. Additionally, there is a tentatively scheduled meeting on Monday, April the 17th at 6:30. It's a council administrative function to review safety protocols. And then on later that evening, at 7:30, we will be having our first budget work session on the operations budget.
I'm sorry, may I point over? When is the formal first budget hearing pursuant to the act? Did I miss that? Did I miss you say that one?
Sure, the, it's not on this one, it's on the outlook, but the first presentation of the city manager's budget will be on the 12th.
Okay.
And the public hearings, I will look that up for you, but they're a little later in the month.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so with that, just gonna check to see if Ann Seacott, our legislative lobbyist, is available.
I don't know if you all can hear me, but I have no sound.
Okay, alright, so it looks like we are not up and live.
Now, now I'm getting you.
Now you're hearing, okay. Can folks help me out and let me know if it's being projected at all?
You, you were on, you were on, the video, the video was on, it was just no sound until just this moment, a moment ago.
Perfect, so just for folks that are listening in, we were dealing with a couple of quick technical issues. So we now have audio and the projection is being put up in the room. Alright, Ann, thank you so much for joining us today. I'm gonna turn things over to you to kinda take us, take us through the update.
Great, so we are at the point of session where a lot of voting is happening. We're coming up Monday, the close of business Monday, and that's whenever they're done, is what we call crossover. And that is when House bills have to be over in the Senate, Senate bills have to be over in the House to avoid additional hurdles. So it does not mean that if your bill doesn't make crossover, is how we say it in Annapolis, it doesn't mean that the bill's dead, it just means if it does get voted on and cross from one chamber to the other, that it has an additional hurdle to get through in order to continue through the process. So there, we're basically done with bill hearings, there are a couple of hearings that are gonna happen tomorrow. But the hearings are basically over and they are just doing a lot of voting in committee, and they're spending a lot of time on the House and Senate floor debating bills and voting on bills. So there's just a lot going on right now. The, some of the bills that look like they're moving, in terms of getting, hopefully getting through by the end of the day Monday, include the unlawful restrictive covenants bill, has passed actually, I don't know if it's totally passed both chambers, but it's moving in both chambers. There is the energy efficiency targets for low-income housing, that bill has passed the Senate. And there is a bill, Councilmember Dibala had asked me about at some point, about clean energy homes, and that bill has moved, I think, out of the Senate, only one chamber so far. So those are things that seem, they're not the only things moving, but those are some highlights of things that are moving. I did wanna give folks an update on the Safe Roads Bill. So this is something that I mentioned last week, that one of Delegate Charcutian's bills around pedestrian safety, and that there was an attempt by the House Committee to get the State Highway Administration to commit to as much as possible in that piece of legislation in writing, so that they could avoid, the Highway Administration was trying to avoid the legislation passing. My understanding is that that letter has been received, I'm happy to pass it along to folks. And that, and what I was told, I haven't seen it yet, but what I've told, what I've been told is that there might be some things that they were not willing to commit to that still may end up passing in a bill. So I don't have the details on what it is in the letter, and that they've committed to, and what that leaves for the bill. I'm hoping to have some time tomorrow to dig into that. But that was some new news today, just this afternoon, because I was talking to the mayor earlier today, and I didn't have that update for her earlier today. So that's a bit of good news. And then, and just because I know it's, you know, something that's always, that's been a long-time priority for the city, I do not believe that the Just Cause Eviction Bill will pass. And then the last thing I wanna say before opening up for any questions is just, some of you may have read some news about the budget last week. So the Board of Revenue Estimates got new information, and did a very significant write-down of revenue, over half a billion dollars, about half a billion dollars, less in revenue coming in than expected. And it put a little damper on some legislators who were thinking some things were gonna get passed that maybe now they're not, where they have to be smaller than what was expected. So this week, they're not as gloomy as they were on Friday, Friday people were gloomy. And, but, but we're, the House has made some budget decisions, the Senate is making their budget decisions, and we are still expecting to see supplemental budgets coming from the governor. And there are some pockets of reserves that he may, he may not pull from, and that legislators may pull from as well with their newfound budget authority this year. So that's really, I think, next week gonna be a big focus after the crossover deadline on Monday, is a lot of the negotiating on some of the details in the budget.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, sorry for making weird faces at you while you were talking, I'm glad you got it together. Nonetheless, there are a couple of things that I wanted to talk to you about. The first one is, I'm curious about any of the additional legislation that was proposed concerning notice and landlords and tenants, in particular, in particular, there's a member of District 20, and if I wasn't sure, I'd remember the name, who put in a bill on that, or is supporting a bill on it as a part of the leadership team. And I was curious about whether or not that one was going to move about rent increases. And then additionally, I appreciate the fact that, I'm certain that you carried water about the premise of the state highway, trying to avoid actual accountability to citizens or residents. And so I would just like to say that if any of the potential marked items end up in legislation, that I am happy to walk around with you or any other thing to talk anecdotally about it. If it happens after the 31st, I'll have a whole bunch of other fatuous information from the Purple Line people to add to whatever it is that I would lobby about. And again, thank you for all of your help in me feeling awesome about potentially passing that restrictive covenant bill, basically by myself.
You're welcome, so on the landlord-tenant bill front, there is a, there are a bunch of bills again, I don't think quite as many as last year. The one that I know is moving has to do, is actually the one that passed last year that former Governor Hogan vetoed, related to licensing of landlords. That in local communities where licensing is required, the landlord cannot use rent court in a tenant holding over case to evict the tenant. That bill came back because it had passed, and needed just about this entire session worth of negotiating to make it palatable again. So that bill is passing, and that's good.
Do you know about the notice for, specifically the one that I'm intrigued about is the notice for rent increases? Because there's no reason not to align it with the notice for foreclosures, and that's 90 days, so I was just curious.
So that's, I think that's House Bill 151 you're talking about.
I believe yes.
And there has been some talk in the House about making some really significant amendments to it. I think it's getting a lot of pushback from landlords, landlord and building, property owner associations.
You could tell that day, that's why I was curious, I kinda knew what was gonna happen, I'm just disappointed.
So I actually believe it was in a subcommittee today for discussion. I was not able to participate in that, but I can find out if they did get to it and what they did. But I think that they were doing a lot of weird things to that bill, because I don't think-
No, they don't like it, it makes too much sense.
-passed sort of as a straight kind of notice of rent increase bill, which is how it was introduced.
And then if you could send me the letter, I'd also appreciate that as well.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Fulter?
We were all nodding along when you brought up the SHA letter that we would all like to see it, I saw, I saw Councilmember Dibala also nodding along. And then I know you're really busy right now, you know, with session being in and everything. I would love to get together and talk afterwards about some of the bills that we supported. You know, what your thoughts are about, you know, why they might not have gotten through. I know that you don't always know, but you also are very smart, so you might have some ideas. So I would love to get together after it's all over, when you're a little bit less busy, when you're not running from place to place, to talk about it.
Depending on the mood we're in, we could call it a debrief or an autopsy. Maybe it depends on each bill, but, and absolutely, and I can also dig around and ask people if I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah, Delegate Charcutian's, the stop sign bill came up at Councilmember Hansak's meeting that she had Monday night. The chief of police in Tacoma Park was really looking forward to that possibly getting passed, and so we might be a little bit heartbroken, so just would like to understand more.
So I really have been having conversation, it's a typical conversation at this time of year. It's, you know, okay, let's, we can mourn things that didn't pass that we wanted to have pass, but let's look at it as an opportunity. And that's even more so this year simply because there's a new administration. You know, what are the things that we can do during the interim to build relationships with state agency people, to build, you know, relationships in coalitions with allies? You know, what are the things we can do to try to, you know, build support for the things we really care about? So that's the, that is the fun part to do after session, again, after we spend a moment being sad that the things we really liked didn't pass.
I'm an optimist, so that moment doesn't have to be very long, I'll be ready.
Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, a couple of things. On the bill chart, there's two bills in the environment section that look like nothing has happened in a while. And so maybe if you don't know right now, maybe next week you can, you can let us in on it. And one is HB 904, the Empower Bill. And the other is HB 908, the Community Solar Bill. And they've both had hearings on both sides nearly a month ago, and BUPKAS. As far as official movement.
Councilmember Dibala, isn't that Empower Bill just a reauthorization? Why isn't that in them?
Uh, no, it makes a lot of changes too.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, changes we like, but then there's people who don't. Who think it, utilities in particular, who think it goes a bit far in requiring them to do things. So I'm just curious about the status of those.
So I've listened to the hearings, and you know, it is very clear that there's, you know, folks on both sides of the issue, pro and con. I'm very happy on both of those bills to make some inquiries to find out. And basically, at this time of session, it's, look, does this have a shot?
Yeah.
Or is it like, no, just ignore it? But I can, I'll find out about those, I'll reach out to sponsors and some key people on the committees.
Okay, thank you.
I did wanna say, I forgot to mention one thing. There is a late filed bill that we submitted testimony on today.
Right.
The bill around sprinkler systems in high-rise buildings. So that was a bill that got introduced late, and so, but we were able to get some testimony in for the hearing tomorrow in the Senate.
Thank you for that. I wanted to ask one last question. I know you're focused on state, but I understand the county budget proposal for next year was released today. Anything, have you had time to hear anything about that?
No, I've not heard a word of it.
So just FYI for all concerned, county budget proposal is out. Yes, and I imagine it'll be a topic tomorrow night.
So thank you so much, Ann, for working with me to get the Melanie Diaz Sprinklers Saves Lives Act testimony out. I don't think people really realize how late of a file it was, and I'm like, uh! We have like two hours to get something together, and Ann was-
Oh, we had time to spare.
And the fact that Ann worked with me to get that in, I'm so grateful for, you know, your quick turnaround on that. And so I think, I think the only other, you know, I did have a chance to chat with Delegate Charcutian, and I think there may be some items that, you know, we are watching Monday to see what passes, or what kind of makes it through. I cannot remember exactly, but I know her condo, the condo item, I'm not sure if that one is gonna fly. Yeah, I don't think so.
So, yeah, I think, I'm double checking to make sure I have the right bill. Her bill is about clean energy equipment for condos, it's House Bill 101. And it has, it is moving, it's, yeah, it's passed the House. The Senate bill has not moved.
Yeah.
So, but that is Senator Smith's bill. So, you know, I'm very happy to communicate and, you know, sort of figure out, you know, would someone from the Tacoma Park City Council reaching out be helpful on this bill? And, you know, communicating to Senator Smith that the city council supports this, assuming-
Yes, yes, that would be, that would be great. We could do that.
Okay.
Alright, okay. Well, thank you so much, Ann, seeing no more lights. Again, I'm so grateful to your quick turnaround and all of the work that you've been doing. I know there's just a lot that's happening in Annapolis, and, you know, the fact that you've been so diligent in keeping us at the forefront of a lot of these activities is a testament to the wonderful work that you do, so thank you so much.
Thank you all, good night.
Good night. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to public comments. Public comments on voting items, as a reminder, we are voting tonight on the second reading ordinance approving FY 2023 budget amendment number five. Do we have any public comments regarding budget amendment number five? The city clerk, we don't have any, any people on Zoom? Okay. It's probably not on voting. Okay, general comments, okay, perfect. Alright, so seeing no comments on voting items, I'm gonna move on to general public comments. Does anyone have general public comments?
Tom Gagliarda. I've previously said to the mayor and council that it's important to me and it's important to my neighbors, and it has been in the more than 40 years that I've lived in this town, to know that our elected representatives care about us, listen to us, and consider what we contribute to the discussion. That you couldn't give me one minute before you went into closed session is contrary to my 40 years of experience with participatory democracy in the city of Tacoma Park, where citizen comments are encouraged and welcomed. I'm gonna make those statements now, and I'm gonna begin by saying, reminding you, as I said at a prior meeting, we are neighbors. You are our neighbors, I am your neighbor, the people watching on cable are our neighbors. Everybody lives in the city. Everybody lives in the city, we have a common interest, we need to work together. Now, this whole open meeting question has gone awry. Now, there are people on this council who think that what I say about the requirements of the law are incorrect. And all I'm gonna tell you is that every day, two lawyers go into courtroom, go into a courtroom, and when they come out, one of them is found to be correct and the other isn't. I'm, I have no interest in arguing with a very competent attorney representing the city. I don't know Mr. Cornerbrooks personally, I know people in his firm, I know prior partners in that firm. I know they are a good, experienced, knowledgeable firm. There's no criticism meant of anything they might have told you or not told you. But the first and most important thing is, is that the law, first of all, requires meetings to be open, such as this one, and only allows them to be closed under certain circumstances. And unless those circumstances are met, the meeting cannot be closed. There has to be an open meeting at which a recorded vote takes place. And there has to be a majority in favor of closing the meeting. A statement has to be made as to what is to be discussed in the meeting, and nothing else may be discussed in closed session. And there's a right to protest the closing. I wasn't gonna tell you you couldn't meet tonight. I was gonna tell you, provide us with more information. I've sent all of you a, an email. What is, what is the downside to providing detailed notices? It's E R Services versus Tacoma Park pending in Montgomery County, it's a breach of contract over $100,000. How do I know that? All that's in the public record. May I please have 30 seconds to finish? That's all I'm asking you to do, is to provide more information because, because the hallmark, the foundation, the most fundamental principle of leadership is trust. And the predicate to trust is openness and transparency, and secrecy undermines trust. When you don't tell people what you just met about, they think you must be up to something. Now, that may be totally unjustified, but that's human nature. I'm saying this not as your enemy, but as somebody who, as I repeatedly say, I'm your neighbor, I want you to succeed. One last comment. I know, this is important, and this came up just tonight. I was told by a member, an elected representative of the city of Tacoma Park, quote, "You are nothing but an old white man." That is a dismissive statement based on race, gender, and age, and whatever else it is. It is absolutely an unforgivable statement for an elected representative to make to a member of the community. And I am asking for an apology, and I will be back until I get that apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments, general comments?
Thank you for giving me the extra time.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for this segment, for comments at your meeting. My name is John Rogers, and I've lived at 7425 Baltimore Avenue in Tacoma Park for 29 years. I came to the city council meeting this evening to ask you to set out with particularity your views on the budget issues that are facing the city. I understand that the mayor and council have indicated that budget transparency is important. I agree with that sentiment and therefore call on the mayor and council to act quickly in setting out their views on whether the city is or is not spending amounts greater than what is being taken in, and to state so publicly and with particularity using actual budget numbers. As we go through this process, there are two other points I think the mayor and council should keep in mind. First, like many in Tacoma Park, my wife and I are on fixed incomes. As it is, property taxes make up a double-digit percentage of our yearly budget, and make up an even greater percentage of our actual yearly income. That's a, that's a lot, and just, I want you to know that. But it isn't just, this, this isn't just a concern to residential homeowners in this city. The burden of property tax doesn't just fall on individual homeowners. Rather, numerous studies show that the burden of property tax is principally borne by renters because the property taxes pass through to renters. In this regard, and as I read it, please note that Section 6.20.0808A, Romanate 7, of the city's rent stabilization provisions specifically define property taxes as an operating expense to be used in assessing fair return petitions for rent increases. So it's right there, property taxes are included in the definition of operating expenses. Consequently, property tax increases can, and I suspect are, I don't have the information there to say whether it has or not, but are passed on to Tacoma Park renters. So, the city's fiscal position is very, is a very important matter for many of the city's citizens, thus quickly and publicly establishing the city's financial position, and if necessary, promptly fixing it is extremely important because any property tax increases have a serious negative impact on the city's renters, many of whom, as you know, are low to moderate income, and the city's residential owners, many of whom are on fixed incomes. Thank you for listening to my comments, and please let me know if I can assist you in the process. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other general public comments?
Good evening, Sue Miller, Ward Three. As you vote tonight on the final budget amendment and then shift into the new annual budget process, I want to share my perspective as a rank-and-file resident who claims no particular expertise in finance. I've been watching city council meetings for years now and trying but failing to understand the budget. I'm here tonight because I have great hopes for this new council. I know you want to represent your constituents. I know you want to responsibly steward our community resources and to create a more transparent and accountable budget. But I'm also here tonight because when I read the context section on the agenda item for tonight's budget amendment, I felt frustration because the actual context seems to be missing. The context, as I understand it, is this. One, our expenses have been exceeding our income for years. Two, our staff has been growing while our population remained flat for years. Three, we've been drawing down on our reserves. And four, the budget process has remained opaque. I heard a former longtime council member assert last year that no one on the council ever understands the budget. But right now, you have an opportunity to lead us into a better process. I urge you, over the coming weeks, to not be afraid to ask the dumb questions we're all asking ourselves. Ask them over and over if necessary. Please do all you can to shift us into a more responsive and responsible process, and make it a goal to have crystal clarity before approving a budget or budget amendment. This shift doesn't have to wait for a new city manager. In fact, it can't wait, and now would be the perfect time to set expectations for a clearer budget process driven by community needs and hire a manager with those expectations. So, these are some key questions now before the process starts. One, why do our expenses keep growing? Two, what are the essential services our residents say they need now? And three, which of those services maybe could the county provide? I'm excited to hear your ideas on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general comments?
Good evening. My name is Christine Simpson, I live in Ward One. I'm here tonight to remind the council to keep the Tacoma Metro Station development on your front burner. As you know, the proposed changes at the metro station will have a major impact on city residents, thank you, on city residents, your constituents. Some of this impact will be good. The proposed building will provide more housing in the area, some of it affordable. That's a good thing. But some of this impact can be bad. I'm thinking of stormwater runoff from the station into Maryland. Who will pay for remediation if it's required? I'm thinking of traffic congestion caused by a new traffic signal on Carroll Avenue and a new driveway on Cedar. Where is the traffic study? And I'm thinking about the long-term impairment of access to the Tacoma Metro Station by eliminating all parking there, an action which would hit the elderly and the handicapped especially hard. They will simply drive to their destinations instead of taking the metro. How is this a good thing? It's my understanding that in early February, metro officials promised a face-to-face meeting with Tacoma Park City Council. I urge you to contact Metro to insist on this meeting. It's important to meet with Metro before it releases its staff report on the project, and that is related, is slated for release this spring, which starts next week. It's also my understanding that Mark Elrich wants to support the city in its efforts to advocate for an improved project. Please contact him to educate him on the issues and get the benefit of his opinion and experience. Also, it's my understanding that the District of Columbia uses stormwater management calculations that are substantively different from those used by Maryland or the Montgomery County Department of the Environment. Please contact the Montgomery County Department of the Environment for their input on this important issue. So I'm here to encourage your involvement in the Tacoma Metro Development Project. I believe with the participation of this council, this project can be safer, more transit-friendly, environmentally sound, and maybe even beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general comments? Okay, alright, we're gonna go to the Zoom. Do we have any virtual commenters? Hello, Mr. Hubener?
Wow, okay.
You have the floor?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Paul Hubener, Ward Three. First, I want to thank this new council for its markedly different approach to encouraging resident input. Some of us are noting that council members have initiated more outreach to members of the community. I myself have received answers to queries and requests for information or comments from several council members. On that point, I'd like to note that several council members replied to my public comments from last week. I'm hopeful of their assistance in helping some of our neediest neighbors, children among them. When I last checked, there was some $871,000 in ARPA direct relief funds still available. I'm sure I'm not the only person who would like to see more of this $17.5 million of federal money go to those in need rather than more city government buildings. My question for tonight, though, is what is the process for resident input for the selection of the next city manager? Also, what is the current status of the search and who from the council will lead the search committee? Thank you for your thoughtful consideration in these and other matters.
Thank you, Mr. Hubener. Looks like that concludes our public comments period. I will turn things over to city council comments. Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you. First of all, let me just say thanks again for all of the residents in the room and Paul on the call. I want to just make a couple of notes in response to Tom Gagliardo. I appreciate, yes, we are neighbors and we're gonna try and do the right thing here. And I do believe that this council does want to have as much openness as it, as it can. As a new council member, I, I don't know the rules, so I'm learning, but that is my intent and I believe it's the intent of it. John Rogers, thank you. And I do think that the fixed income of household, householders as well as renters is, is an important factor in our, in our decision process. It's, it's the first thing that we have to do, is figure out, is the balance. What we want to do and the, and the price for that and its impact on, on those less fortunate. Sue Katz Miller, Ward Three, thanks again for the budget overview and those three questions I will carry through. I'm going to mention here that planning a Ward Three budget meeting, Sunday, March 26, 2:00 P.M., Spring, Spring Park Pavilion, I'll send that out. So I would like to, I want to get talking with you before we get thrown into horse trading to get your thoughts. Christine, thank you. The Historical Society does great work. I was able to meet with some of your folks. I'm impressed, impressed with, with what I heard and by, and all of, as far as I know, all of the council members are in support of dealing with those questions that you raised in terms of reaching out to Mark Elrich, reaching out to the Department of the Environment, and to deal with those issues that are direly important. Stormwater is an issue that I ran on in this campaign, and it does not respect jurisdictional boundaries. Paul, thank you again for holding up the ARPA, the possibility of using ARPA funds for those least, least able, and for your question about how we will do our recruitment. I'll leave that to, to the council and to the mayor, but we are definitely on it. We are working to recruit as fast as we can. I thank you. And one last thing, I want to say thank approximately 30 volunteers that came out to Sligo Mills Neighborhood Conservation Area, including a half a dozen Ward Three residents. We did a cleanup, major cleanup of a lot of tires, a lot of trash. It was a good day. Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of different things. To begin with, there is, for the residents of Ward Six, I was successful in procuring a meeting with senior staff in the Purple Line concerning the condition of University Avenue. There is going to be some sort of a walkthrough in which they try to explain why it looks good that day, but doesn't look good any other day. So I also notified Delegate Characudian, who has been consistent on this issue, and Mayor Seersy, who has been a stalwart on this issue. Additionally, there are upcoming potential public meetings about the fentanyl crisis in addition to whatever the school district is planning. We've been in contact with them concerning that. And then there also has been a lot of success, as anyone who's been at this meeting has noticed, about the restrictive covenants bill. And I got excited about that because I was the only person who testified on that bill on both sides of the House of Delegates. In fact, on the Senate side, the person who was, the person who dropped the bill didn't even come. And I was more than prepared to actually talk about that, and inadvertently I made somebody mad because when I am focused on the things that I know about, I have a tendency to make people mad because I'm usually not wrong. Notwithstanding that, in addition, storytime-wise, there are lots of different ways to apply oneself in the world. And one of them is to be completely devoted to trying to figure out why the country is a horrible mess. Particularly if you are born on a mountaintop on the wrong side of any sort of given issue concerning race and proximity, and you have a biracial family with an immigrant wife. You tend to know about these things, you tend to have been well-versed in both practice parlance and academia on these subjects. And you are usually ready for all comers. And so we've been going through some things related to the fact that I actually do have some prowess on these things. And so anecdotally, I'll just say that, you know, if you find yourself in the wrong place at the wrong time and the guy above you decides to leave, and somebody preys on you, and you decide to wear the white hat, like, you learn about things because they try to fire you every day. So I'm pretty confident that I know my stuff. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilmember DiBala?
Hey, thank you. A couple of things, the, yeah, last night there was a, a meeting in Long Grange Sligo, a virtual meeting on. a virtual meeting on code enforcement. It went well. Attendance was a little bit marred by the fact that half the neighborhood didn't have power because of the tree that went down. So it's been recorded and it will be available through the Long Branch Community Association or through me. As soon as the tape is shared with me, I'll post it on my stuff. But the, most of the comments that were made, it appears to be more a question of amending the code rather than how it is enforced, in my summary of the meeting. So that's the first thing. Second thing, the Transportation Planning Board met today. We approved the annual work plan. Two things of interest to the council and the city management. The two big issues this year are gonna be, one of them is gonna be the Maryland Express Pass Lanes 270. And it's already been brought up by the mayor of Rockville that we should, yeah, okay. And the second thing is that they put up an environmental justice analysis. Now, the Transportation Planning Board was a leader in the first place in even coming up with the idea that you would have equity areas and that you would look at them. Now they're stuffed out of date, and so they have committed to revising their equity approach. That's not right. Revising their approach to environmental, to equity analysis. It's a little narrower than that, but I thought that was big progress and big news. So, just so everybody knows. Third thing, in my search for federal funds for the city, speaking of budget, I think I finally hit it, there is a Department of Energy program called Building Up, which is specifically targeted to weatherization and electrification in buildings in communities. They want to see community-wide programs, they want to see equity, da-da-da. I mean, it practically wrote itself when I was listening. Anyway, I would like to get a meeting together to talk next week about how we might approach this, and I'm pretty excited about it, actually. That would be it for me for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Tabala. Councilmember Fulter.
First, I want to thank Councilmember Hansak for letting me come to her Ward Five community meeting with the police. It was informative and, you know, make sure that you're interacting with people from other wards. It's delightful. And then, second of all, I just want to remind people that Ward One is having a meeting to talk about the budget on the 23rd. Right now, I have the Azalea Room. I just asked Jesse via email if we can change to the Hydrangea Room just because it has a better virtual meeting setup, but for now, it's in the Azalea Room, and I will let people know if it turns out that the Hydrangea Room's available. If it's not, the meeting will definitely be recorded. I just don't know that it will be as good quality if we don't get in the Hydrangea Room. Also, if you can't make it to that meeting, please email me with, you know, your thoughts or call me or call me or email me, and I will come and talk to you in person so that I can get information from you. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight for the public comments. I'm not gonna reiterate some of the things that my colleagues have said.
Okay, so there's another mic that has gone out on councilmember? Okay, let's get, let's get the other one. Let's see if that works.
Okay, is that my?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to say thank you to all those who came out tonight for public comment and online. Yes, we are neighbors. That is, that is the only reason I'm running for this, is to be neighbors. I believe deeply in transparent government and communication, and I, I hope that I will be one of the people asking some of those dumb questions. Throw them at me. I usually don't know the answer, and I'm asking them behind closed doors up here on the dais and everywhere that I can. So, you know, I never dreamed that there would be so many hours of the day that one could devote to council, actually, as I'm hearing all of us are doing. So, you know, it's hard work, and we're doing our very, very best to do it right and to do it ethically and to do it legally. Please know that every minute of the day. And I just wanted to talk about the public safety meeting that we did have this week. It was one of our first big community-wide meetings that we've had since I joined the council, and honestly, we haven't had a lot of big community meetings. It was really amazing to see how many people came out and online. I'm still getting the final number, but we had a pretty full room, and I was so happy that our mayor was able to join us and councilmember Fulter, and I believe Randy Gibson was also online. So thank you so much for joining us. That means a lot to us that you're listening in on what issues are focused on in our neighborhood. But thank you very much to the Police Department and to the County Police and the Parks Police for giving us of their time and really richly. So most of the feedback that I've gotten has been extremely positive. People felt like they had their questions answered, their immediate burning questions, and the chief has been sending written, I don't know why I'm having mic issues tonight, written answers to people since the meeting happened. So if you have more questions, please send them our way. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. So one of the joys of going last is you don't have to say as many things. So quickly, tomorrow I will be attending along with councilmember Tabala and Gibson? Nope, not Tabala?
No, and I was just.
Okay, the MML meeting? Okay, all right. Well, some of us are gonna be at the MML meeting tomorrow. I know I'll be there. There will be the, just, Maryland Municipal Meeting, Montgomery County Chapter. Just for Ward Six residents, there has been an increase in car break-ins near Hampshire Towers and the Tacoma Overlook. The Police Department has been made aware of that and are increasing their patrols of the area, so just wanted to make sure that folks were aware that patrol was being increased in those areas with the car break-ins. Want to thank all of those that have come out tonight to provide comments. Again, my goal is to strive to be as transparent as we can be and definitely look forward to receiving any feedback that you all have on ways in which we can do that better. In terms of the budget, you'll hear tonight when we talk through priorities, maybe a little surprise to my colleagues, I've tweaked some of our fiscally responsible government priorities just to help us with kind of streamlining what is it that we really want to see in terms of addressing budgetary issues and establishing a path forward. In terms of the Womata Meeting, we are moving forward with that, so that is being scheduled. So thank you, Christine, for your continued advocacy on that. And I think those are all of the comments that I have. I think everyone else has covered everything else. All right, so with that, I will turn things over to our acting deputy city manager, Mr. Eubanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Good evening, members of the public. Just a few announcements today. On March 10th, the 75th session of the Montgomery County Police Training Academy graduated two officers, Officer Corbin Hayes and Javier Canales. The academy itself is a 28-week extensive training course. Our officers continue the training with another two weeks of advanced crisis intervention training, followed by a 12-week field training program. And so we want to send a special congratulations to both officers. With the addition of the two officers, Hayes and Canales, 42 of the 43 officer positions within the Police Department of Field. And my understanding from the chief is that that is a very unique status among police departments within the county and the region. The replacement of the roof of New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center is underway. Work is progressing and is anticipated to take place over the next two weeks. I don't believe we expect any interruptions. The new fully-electric street sweeper will begin cleaning city streets on a regular basis beginning next week. The Public Works Department plans to coordinate a community effort to name the sweeper in a campaign. Announcement will be published soon. So keep that in mind and keep an eye out for it. And lastly, early in the pandemic, as many of you know, one side of Laurel Avenue was closed to accommodate the Old Town Streetery. Since then, Old Tacoma Business Association, OTBA, has received a safety grant from the State of Maryland to study short and long-term options for the permanent or temporary closure of both sides of Laurel Avenue. OTBA is working with a consultant to guide the process and, right now, is looking for some additional community input via survey. The survey link will be posted tomorrow as a part of the council-updated agenda package, and it will be available on the website. We've also shared that link on social media platforms, I believe our Twitter account as well as our Facebook account. And that survey will be open until Friday, March 24th, excuse me, March 24th at 5:00 p.m. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And so with that, we're gonna move into our voting session. So we're voting on the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2023 Budget Amendment Number Five. Just want to do a quick check-in with our acting deputy city manager just to confirm that there are no additional changes beyond those that was discussed during the last council meeting to this resolution?
That's correct, Mayor. There are no additional changes.
Great. Would someone like to move the resolution?
Mayor, may I have some questions? Is it a point of order at some point with regard to the budget?
Once we, once we put it on the table, then we can open it. Would someone like to move the second reading?
I move.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Tabala? All right. Councilmember Gibson, you're free to ask your question.
Yes, there are, I, last week tried to ask some questions, but it wasn't the opportune time, so I am trying to look at some, connecting the dots. I'm also not a budget whiz, so I'm asking the dumb questions that I feel I have to ask, and I was advised to give these questions ahead of time to, to the Finance Director and to the city, Acting City Manager and to Alicia. So I'll just read those questions. I don't know if Mr. Eubanks is gonna respond or whether Ms. Chung will be able to be on the call or not. There was some discussion that she might, but anyhow, I asked the question, and I believe, Mr. Eubanks, that you received the same questions and the answers that she gave. First question had to do with, would it be correct to say that the final projected budget figure of $9,302,260 will be reduced by a $5 million draw on the library bond fund?
The $5 million bond fund is a reduction from the 9.3 million that you see in the general fund, funding source document.
So correct, it is, it is a reduction then. In addition, Ms. Chung, if I might read, said that the, as indicated in the general fund, budget and fund source spreadsheet, total projected deficit of 9.3 million. Of that amount, $5 million will be covered by the bond reserve, and the remaining 4.3 million will be funded by all other reserve funds. The second question I asked, again, trying to connect the dots, I'm trying to understand is, would this figure be, this reduced figure then be further reduced by 3.3 million from the "designated subsequent years" category of the general fund?
The, the remaining balance can come from any of the reserves, including the fund that you just mentioned.
The designated fund, designated subsequent years fund, okay. Although we do not have a final revenue or expenditures for the end of the fiscal year, would it be reasonable to expect that the city will maintain an unassigned reserve of about 17%?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, councilman?
Although we do not have the final revenue or expenditures for the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, would it be reasonable to expect that the city will maintain an unassigned reserve of about 17%?
That question is hard to answer accurately because, as you stated, we don't have the final figures. But what I can say is that right now, we're projecting to have to pull from the unassigned reserve. The amount remaining would determine the percentage and whether or not we're at the 17% marker that we attempt to achieve.
So, I'm sorry, so this would, yeah, I understand, and I stated that we don't have the final figures, that this, that figure, that the, that 17% will come from the unassigned reserve, that's, that's fine. Lastly, given the above projections, would this mean that the city will have an approximately $2 million deficiency that must be met by either cost reductions and/or tax and revenue increases?
The deficit, the $4.3 million, is covered by the reserves. So that could be a combination of the unassigned reserve or any of the other city reserves.
The $2 million deficit, when you drop out, when you take off the bond and, and then the unassigned reserve, it left a roughly $2 million deficiency in my calculation.
The unassigned reserve, the current amount is 4 point some odd million dollars, I think it's 4.6. And so the way you're phrasing it suggests that there's no money to cover the remaining $2 million, and that's, that's not correct. We have unassigned reserve balance to cover any remaining deficit.
Okay, so that the unassigned reserve will cover both the 17%, will likely cover the 17% that we want to
For three months.
Save as our reserves, and then we will also, then, out of the 4.7 unassigned reserve, we can, we can deal with the, the remaining 2.2 or 2.7 out of the unassigned.
I just want to, yeah, I want to provide some clarity there. So the goal of the unassigned reserve, the policy goal is to maintain a balance of 17%. If, the current trajectory of the city is that we, between, we've actually already started, the last few years, with the exception of last year, we have reduced the unassigned reserve, excuse me, just the fund balance, I'll just call it a fund balance, which includes all of, all of the reserves. That has been decreasing year by year, with the exception of last year. Right now, the projections suggest that this year, we will continue the trend of eating into our reserve so that our ending reserve balance is lower than our beginning reserve balance.
So, yeah, I understand, so we have a trend line that's eating into, and I think the, Ms. Chung noted that, that it looked like something on the area, I'm trying to remember or recount what she said. City staff is working on the cost reduction and tax revenue increases in fiscal year. David and all the department heads are working diligently to find ways to reduce the expenditures in the general fund. As for the fiscal year 2023, we're already advancing to the end of the third quarter of the fiscal year. Most likely, we, we have no or very limited options for any revenue increases. We, we could work on expenditure reduction if the contracts were not signed and the work schedule not started. However, during the work process of fiscal year 2023, fiscal year 2023 projected budget, the department heads reminded us that a lot of the contracts were finalized.
Right, so that's a reference to FY 23, and what Director Chung is saying is that we have committed to a certain amount of expenses. And so for FY 23, the ability for us to reduce is limited. That was the former city manager's attempt via the hiring freeze and, and, and other actions. In the absence of that, well, I'll move on to FY 24. I think what Finance Director Chung is saying for FY 24 is that a part of our budget exercise is an attempt to better align our revenues and expenses, recognizing that in the long term, if we continue some of the current trends, we will quickly run through our unassigned reserve.
Yes, understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Small. Okay, Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Acting Director Eubanks, I have a couple of questions for you concerning the, the finding yourself in the role and the first couple of weeks, you looked good in the chair. But specifically, I'd just like to reiterate that in the context of this process, I, I feel very strongly that with a previous budget that was not brought to any sense of fruition, that was specifically enumerated by this council, that there is a significant opportunity here with regard to the constant yield rate and applying the same amount of money to the future. I recognize that there may be some complexities about what is ideal and I am an idealist and I would just additionally charge you to at least consider the prospect of what a hard cut budget based on the constant yield rate would look like in addition to whatever the cost overruns would be with regard to using the reserves, which are not deficit spending, don't indicate any real deficit at all, but have something to do with the planning operation of the corpus of the town. And so using their funds that are reserve funds that are illegally called carryover funds because they go back into the reserve, so they technically lapse into the reserve, that the opportunity to use those funds by any given body of legislators is an important part of the effective administration of government. And so I would charge you to try to merge those two notions in your position. I think my question with regard to that is directly related to anticipated planning concerning the constant yield rate and relatively speaking, the sheer volume of things within the previous budget that one could argue were unilaterally addressed by the person who was previously in your position.
I, I guess I should make a, a few statements. Balancing, it depends on what we mean by balancing. We have had several practices, I think, in the last many years and some interesting practices in the last few years. The, the most confounding, I think, is the practice of withdrawing funds from reserves and not replacing them. So I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Councilman, that the, the purpose of reserves is to, in a sense, fund, fund deficits. Reserves are, are purposed for that, right? The, the challenge is if we are not replacing the reserves at the rate at which we are supposed to, then the drawdown simply reduces the overall fund balance. And what the city has not been doing in recent years is replacing the reserve. In addition to that, we've also, in some instances in the last few years, also been tapping the unassigned reserves. So not only are we reducing some of our reserve accounts to cover things like equipment purchases, which we should be, but we've also been tapping unassigned reserves. And so the overall fund balance in the last few years has been decreasing and we haven't been replacing it. I'll also add to that, that is not a simply, I think I'm alluding to it, but it's not simply an exercise of balancing the city's operating budget. That is no small task. As a, for instance, I think in FY 24, we're projecting reductions of reserves in the amount of, I want to say it's something like five million dollars. That does not balance the budget. And to your point, if things were working as they should, then it would. In addition to pulling on reserves, we will potentially have to withdraw from unassigned reserves. And that's not the practice that we want to proceed with. And so what it requires is a reduction in operating expenses. The challenge though is that there's a demand from the public as well as council. And so if the expectation is that we maintain a certain level of operations, it can also be the expectation that we continue the same level of service. So that's the discussion for council to, to have as a part of the budget process.
Thank you. Thank you, David. I, I sincerely appreciate your answer. I am excited about working through this process with you at the helm. And I would charge you to, notwithstanding any of these things, try to do the best practices of maintaining the, the three months of operating expenses that are implied by the seventeen percent. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the discussion tonight, Mr. Eubanks. Appreciate that. It's educational. And I would just ask the mayor if, we have talked about it some in the past of, you know, giving clear direction to the, the acting city manager, deputy city manager. He's kind of in both chairs right now. As far as in general, what kinds of reductions that we would expect to see in his proposed budget? Because I fear that if we, if we don't express our desires, Mr. Eubanks is going to come in with a proposed budget and we're going to look at it and say, oh, no, that's not what we wanted. I think it's in the nearest term possible, as soon as possible, that we give some clear direction to Mr. Eubanks on what, what areas would be acceptable and what areas would definitely not be acceptable.
I'd associate myself with that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Siemens. That's why we added that nice, good old work session. Next week, we'll be talking about the, the process, just so that everybody kind of has an idea of what to expect. My hope is tonight, if, when we start talking through priorities, that folks remember and that's, this is something that we will be talking about tonight around the list of things that people want, that we are realistic in keeping in mind that our priorities and what we described sets the stage for what we want council, what we want staff to do, right? So the priorities is in essence the outline of the priority work plan we have. And then when we have the conversation about the process next week for the budget, I'll make sure to work in an opportunity for some council feedback on aspects of just budget rate and where people want to be. Because I think it's, it's really important for us to not talk out of both sides of our mouths where we are asking for the world but only want to pay for a hot dog. So I, I want to just remind everyone that that is something that we're going to have to tackle on both fronts. So the priorities discussion is critically important because they're able to use our priorities and what we're outlining in terms of the strategies and what we want to have done as a way to look at the activities that they may be considering right now to make sure that they're meeting council demand.
I thank you, Mayor. That's exactly what I was hoping for. I knew that you had been discussing that some. But Mr. Eubanks brought us some things this evening that are beyond just the priorities such as the reserves and how do we want to handle reserves? Do we want to draw some down? Do we want to not touch reserves? So I think, again, I'd like to see that in next week's discussion.
May, may I add one thing, Mayor?
Sure.
I want to make council aware that in order for city staff to provide council with the information that council needs according to our timeline, there's a, there's a very small window within which we can make any changes. And city staff have developed a proposed budget based on the information that we have from council thus far. And so I think the, the best opportunity, and that is to get us to just up to the date when the presentation is going to be made to council. Changing that timeline now would, would delay the schedule. And so my hope is that a lot of that discussion, which you just brought up, Councilmember, would happen as a part of the reconciliation process. Because it's, it's, there wouldn't be enough time for staff to make any changes, substantial changes from, from this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, well, I haven't been the only one that made comments that we should look at the constant yield. I said last week, we should look at constant yield, perhaps two scenarios, constant yield plus two percent. So it's, I, I hear you saying that perhaps we're talking about a maintenance budget with minor, with minor reductions. That's not what I was talking about. That's not what I intended. So I'm hoping that we don't, that we can have a, at least some kind of scenario that is not, ahead of time before talking about reconciliation after the fact. I think we needed to give guidance. We, I think there's been several discussions about guidance and the need for us to be fiscally responsible, responsible and myself and, and others on the council have, as well as the public, has, has raised some issues about at least looking at what constant yield would look like. And I, I don't want to personally end up there, but a constant yield for two percent is something that I would like to see in an initial scenario, not after the horse trading.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes. I'm going to, I think I'm repeating what I've suggested a couple of times to have just at least in concept, constant yield, tax rate we have now, ECI.
We can definitely, we can definitely
What does it mean for constant yield? Because I have a feeling what it's going to mean, we're not going to want to do. But we need to know what it is in concept. Is it lose, you know, lose the, lose the trash program? Is it lay people off? I mean, what is it? Yeah, just in concept, that would, that would work for me to have those, those three scenarios.
Yes, that's, that's the plan, to provide it in concept. Absolutely.
Great.
It, I, the, the amount of cutting that we would have to do to get to constant yield, it, there's quite honestly no way for us to, to make the determination without council's input. So we, but we can present the, we can present the concept.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, and that's why I, I, I keep harping back on the priorities, right? So I spent lots of hours going through everybody's stuff. And it's a lot. So I, 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 I want to make sure that we're able to move forward on this vote so that we can walk through some of the proposals and things that I've suggested in terms of streamlining a bit. There are still some areas in terms of the, in terms of the priorities. Because I, I cannot stress enough, I, 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 I cut quite a bit in the version that I'm proposing primarily because it, what I saw was not fiscally feasible for us to do without hiring a bunch of folks. And so I want to make sure that we're keeping those, that, that mindset of if we want to be lean and mean with the budget, then we need to be lean and mean with what we're expecting people to accomplish over a, a year or two-year period. They have to align.
Agreed.
Otherwise, this is a futile exercise. Okay? So right now
I'd like to do this. I'd, I'd like to be the person who requests that we approve this resolution.
Oh, it's already on the table.
Oh, groovy. Can we call the question in?
Yep, we're about to call the vote.
All right, call the question.
All right, so just to remind me, Councilmember Gibson moved the, the ordinance. Councilmember DeBala, second, all right? Just going to check with the city clerk really quickly to make sure that we don't need to do a roll call and we can just do, this is an ordinance, so we
Can we do it as a roll?
Yep.
I prefer.
If it doesn't bother you, but I prefer
Let the city clerk. We need to call the roll. All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Cearse?
Yes.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Honsack?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Okay. Perfect. So with that, we'll, this, the second reading has passed. Councilmember Gibson, your lights on? All right, excellent. All right, so with that, we're going to move forward to the work session. I'm looking at the time and I, I want to go ahead and give us a quick early break just so that we can reconvene at nine o'clock. Thank you. All right. We're going to reconvene with our next agenda item, which is a discussion, a work session discussing council priorities. Now, I know that members of the council have received quite a bit of paper. So I'm just gonna walk you through what you're looking at.
Tour the pile.
So.
And are there versions of this online for? Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so there's not a version online and there's not gonna be one posted up on the screen yet. I'm just asking because. Oh, sorry, I forgot about my.
So we have hard copies here. We, we don't. If it is necessary for me to pull this up electronically and share my screen, I'm happy to do that.
Can we make it public?
We can make it public after this call, after this meeting. So folks will be able to have that, that version. Okay? I want to make sure that we're able to stay on, on topic and on time. All right, so we have, you have a number of things before you. In the larger packet, you have your, the 2021, 2022 council priorities. Yep, it's the thick one. It's the thick one.
It's the single, single-sided.
The single side.
Oh, is that one? Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, excellent. So what this is, is the 2021, 2022 adopted council priorities along with the shared markup of what was, what was shared by council members. And then the other document that you have that starts with advancing a community of belonging is the version of where I took the markups and turned them into a working draft.
Wait a minute, say that again. So this is the one that is cut out?
Yes.
And this is the one?
This is, this is all of the edits and markups and comments that everybody gave, okay? All right? That's the markup. That was the shared document that a lot of people get. The thick one is just gives you all of the line item comments. The single side. It's just one is single-sided, one is double. They should be the same.
This is the one that she.
Yep. So everyone, we're gonna walk through the document that has at the top. Number one, advancing a community of belonging. That's what we're gonna walk through. That's the version that I took all of the feedback and tried to meld things and to try to, to get it into a workable draft for us. All right, so let's. Yep, that's a non-markup.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just as far as going, like if this was like, they were both on a computer screen and we were going A to B, like, is this, like, the red line here gonna be what you discussed about getting to here, or is that the edits prior to you getting to here? You see what I'm saying?
So what I've done, let me just make sure everyone understands. What I've, what I've done is there were quite a few write-ups, markups, and things that created instances where there's a lot of duplication of information across the document. So what I am going to do is walk you all through the working draft so that you all will understand how I had to kind of tweak some things and streamline some things to give us a really clean story based on conversations I've had with you all, but also the edits that were in the document. Okay? All right, so let's jump in. So the first item that was in our prior priorities was around mitigating the impact of COVID-19 on the city and city operations. And then the markup, there was mitigate the impact of COVID-19 and of concurrent global economic structural events on the community and city operations. Well, one of the things that, and I know councilmember Hanzek and I chatted about this, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we were able to do was to try to streamline the COVID piece so that it was a little bit cleaner in terms of what it is that we're really trying to do, which is not just address the pandemic, but to keep in mind that as a result of the pandemic, we experienced or saw a lot of residents that were dealing with challenges as a result of some unforeseen event. So what I've tried to do is to meld the, the COVID-related items into a new, our new goal that is a combination of the COVID, but also the a livable community for all. So the first goal under advancing a community of belonging, which kind of picks up on some of the COVID stuff, the goal is build on lessons learned during the COVID-19 pandemic to increase residents and small businesses' resilience to the impact of unforeseen events so that they can recover and thrive in the future. So the strategies were to continue to allocate COVID-19 relief funds to programs that ensure residents and businesses can recover from the pandemic and increase their future stability by having access to emergency assistance they need in terms of food, housing, healthcare, childcare, financial support, and other needs. Support residents in their effort to build financial stability by obtaining new employment through emergency workforce development programs and technical assistance. Offer technical assistance based on lessons learned during the COVID-19 response to businesses to ensure that they are able to stay in the community during future events. And then coordinate with state, county, and local nonprofits and community groups to ensure that there is a social safety net available to provide support to residents during future emergencies. And the desired outcome is residents and businesses have access to the services and programs they need to recover quickly from emergency situations.
Do we get to talk?
Councilmember Small?
Oh, thank you. I, I'd just like to say, Mayor, I think that, given the fact that we're moving toward, from some sort of pandemic-to-endemic situation with regard to COVID-19, that this seems to make sense rather than the specificity that was related to immediately trying to deal with the issue. So I just, I think this makes sense.
Appreciate that you and I had a more extended conversation about this whole section as it was in the previous priorities. I, one of the things that we had talked about, and I wonder if you could just talk us through, or talk me through it if others are not interested, but I, was the concept of our ARPA dollars and kind of what they represent for the city and where you see them aligning, if they align very clearly. My recollection was you were previously thinking, if I remember correctly, that the ARPA, if you will say, the things that are prioritized under the ARPA funding as they currently stand were more under a different section, or they were under this doc, this section in the document.
Yeah, they were under, they were, aspects of them were related to the livable community for all. And so what it seemed like was, under the livable community for all goal, we had a identifying program, programming needs in the community item. That's on page two, and that's one goal. But what seemed really clear to me is that we had priorities around identifying gaps, but we didn't really have a clear goal that identified the amount of work that we're gonna do to, and that we're still doing to try to address gaps that we already know exist. So I thought that it, it made sense to kind of, based on our conversation and kind of what was combined, to say, we've put things out in, we've put things, funds out in terms of ARPA, but there's still work that has to be done. We still have some other, like our community navigators. We, we still have our emergency, our direct cash assistance. We still have a lot of different programs that we're implementing as a result of ARPA that fits into addressing some of the gaps that the other goal was just saying that we were going to identify. So for example, ARPA dollars also includes rec, rec funds as well. So it seemed to me to try to meet all of those objectives that it makes sense for, under advancing a community of belonging, our first goal was to build off of what we learned with ARPA and how we're using those funds to actually provide direct need support. Advancing race equity, identifying program needs in the community and what we may need to, and how we could address them. Maintain, and then maintaining our sanctuary city status. So those four goals kind of came under the idea of advancing a community of belonging kind of collectively versus having aspects of COVID, public health emergencies and COVID specifically. It, it did kind of feel a little bit more like a lot of those items weren't applicable in terms of our response anymore to the direct pandemic.
So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, is it fair to say that it's, it's, if we were to think of the prioritization, our priorities in alignment with ARPA funding, and I'm sorry I'm so fixated on this, but I think it's helpful for city residents, is it fair to say that it's blended, in this document, it's right now kind of blended with our existing city priorities in this section one versus some of the other sections? Or do you feel like it appears throughout?
Yeah, it's melded in other.
Throughout the whole document.
Yeah, it's melded in other places too.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So like the. Fiscal responsibility of the ARPA dollars, that's in the financially, like, that's in that section. So, but if there are other places where ARPA is missing, but that's what we, that's what I tried to do.
I, I'd just like to say I understood when I was saying that I liked this, that the ARPA stuff was blended into other places because we still need an ARPA person to do the ARPA stuff correctly. So I just, I assumed that that was part of what you were saying. I apologize.
Yeah, and, and I think too, the big thing with the ARPA was to make it a little bit more on building off of lessons learned, getting the money out the door, and making that point really clear. And so it did seem in going through the livable community for all, we were, we were missing that direct service piece. And then when we were looking at a lot of the, a lot of the COVID-related things, given that the public health emergency aspect of things is going, then we needed to cut a lot of the things related to vaccinations and things like that. So it just kind of made sense to try to streamline it in a way to make it fit under the, the new advancing a community of belonging and making it more about building that resilience there. But, but definitely, let me know if. But, but definitely, let me know if, if that doesn't work.
No, I, I think, I think that was generally where we fell. I think, I guess I'm just feeling like, if, if I were on the city staff, for example, looking at our priorities, it, to me, it might be very helpful, especially as they're going through the budget exercise, to kind of look at our priority document and see i- if it's possible. And I, I, I mean, I just highlighted for myself, the very first strategy under the first goal, to me, captures, to me, a big, a, a big aspect of what ARPA funding is intended to be for. It, it might be helpful to, for us as council at least, to be clear on which, which of the priorities we feel like most aligned with the ARPA funding, just so that we understand, especially as we go into, you know, two years from now when we no longer have ARPA funding, presumably, um, kind of what, what might fall off logically, uh, what is no longer worded that way, or, you know, and I don't know whether it's that clean. I, I, it's just something I think would be helpful to be mindful of as we go through the budgeting process, but. Yeah.
Yep. Um, Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, just, um, two things. I, I was gonna say this at some point, um, in terms of the prior, uh, uh, you know, this, this priority process, the council priorities, we are building, uh, on the prior council's priorities. We're building on that, adding to that. And they offer a good plan and a framework of preferred goals and strategies. What it doesn't do, it does not provide measurable results, and it does not provide clear linkage to resource allocation. So, I think the question, uh, with, um, raised just before me, have, having to do with ARPA dollars, is, is useful in the sense of, well, that's, there's an allocation, um, pot there. So, I just wanted, that's the context here, and, and these are, these are really useful. Um, I, I, as I said, they're, they're, it's a framework of preferred goals and strategies, but I have a hard time when we don't have clear measurables and we don't have a clear linkage to the budget. We're, we're, we're kind of, uh, we're not giving it a whole lot of guidance to, to the, uh, to the staff, I think. Uh, and, and I think we should, but. From that, just kind of overview, I, I wanna do my part with this. I, 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 I'm, um, just kind of taken by resilience to the impact of unforeseen events. I really, I think that's just so, so extremely broad. I, I, I somewhat liked better when you talked in the desired outcome about emergency situations. Unforeseen events is just too big, too big for me to, to get a handle on. Uh, I don't have any problem with completing or with, um, merging some of the COVID, uh, strategies, COVID, the learnings within this section. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with putting it here, so.
Um, so, Councilmember Gibson, I, I think I'm hearing it edit. So, instead of unforeseen events, emergency situations in the goal. Keeping in mind, um, with this one, what we're, what I was really trying to make sure that we were doing, one, the, although COVID work is funded, staff have to devote time to implement it, right? So, it's funded in that, um, aspects of the work is funded, but the, not all of the staff time and resources devoted to implementing these programs is covered under necessarily the dollar amount that's tied to the program. So, for example, um, with the direct cash assistance program, we put a lot of money out there. We're, our, our goal was to get as much money as we could out the door. Um, we have a contractor that's helping us to make sure that there isn't any fraud or any malicious activity that's happening with the payments. But our staff are the ones that have to go door-to-door. Our staff are the ones that we're asking to, uh, uh, help people in the library to, um, apply for those funds.
Our understaffed staff.
So, we need to be mindful of, even though the COVID funds are available, the work may have budgetary implements, um, budgetary, you know, impacts because it requires staff time to do. So, with this one, um, the goal was to really think about it from the perspective of, we still, over the next two years, we still have to get this, these ARPA projects done. We still need staff time to do it. Um, and, and it doesn't necessarily just stop with ARPA, because, I mean, uh, uh, you know, emergency situations could mean there's a fire, right? And someone needs emergency rental assistance, someone needs, you know, and, and we're expecting staff to do some of that stuff and support people during those transitions. So, I think what would be, um, that was another reason why I tried to move it, move it down. But, but I hear you, and I think we can take that unforeseen events out and make it emergency situations.
And Randy, I just wanted to say, Randy, that part of that, it being resilient.
It might be, uh, I think you're, primarily, you're talking about health and, uh, economic emergency. I don't know that, again, I, I just don't want to get, get us, offering a safety, social safety net for everything, which we used down below.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, no. But, uh, it's something that I wanna avoid us, I wanna be as narrow and as precise as possible what we think we can do, because again, everything costs.
Yep.
So, my question is, are you looking for general comments now and edits later? Because this document is gonna be sent to us?
Mm-hmm.
Tell us how you.
Sure.
Want us to respond.
So.
If we go line by line.
We'll be here all night. What I'm trying to do is give folks a general overview of some of the decision-making that I had to do to kind of turn it into a bit of a workable draft, so that you all can take a look and review, so that we can have something cleaner and ready for, for posting and potential, uh, uh, potential vote if we can, depending on how far off we are, um, next week.
And Mayor, I just, I didn't want to interrupt you, Randy, I was just, you did say a specific thing that I wanted to both edify and slightly distinguish. Um, because using the word resilience in this document in the way that she did indicates a, a parallel, well, I don't even know if it's parallel, like, kind of angled, um, set of government procedures and protocols associated with sustainability. And so, like, I think using that there, um, is not necessarily a catch-all, but it does indicate, uh, a layer of policy perspective for the staff on this issue. And so, I, I just wanted to say, like, I, I hear your comments. Um, but specifically, that, one of the things that I appreciated about that particular section is that particular tagline, um, because in the best practices language for, uh, municipal government people, the resilient stuff is, like I said, sort of parallel-ish, and it includes, like, public safety issues and, um, uh, built environment issues associated with flooding and all those kinds of stuff. And so, it's kind of a practical, world's-on-fire component to the sustainability stuff. So, I just wanted to make sure that we put that out on the page.
Appreciate it, yeah. Resilience is, is a useful word, and I guess it often means, uh, kind of a recovery. It doesn't mean that everyone becomes whole. It, it's a recovery from something.
No, no, I mean, I mean to say, like, from, from my previous experience, that, that structurally resilience, when people, I, I would think, David, I, I could be wrong, you could tell me. But resilience is a set of structural circumstance realities that's not necessarily deterministic philosophy, but indicates that we live in a place that is, or we live in a world that is dealing structurally with changes that are going to be semi-permanent in the future, in addition to trying to mitigate those changes with sustainable practice. So, I, I, I do mean to say that there is a best practices structure associated with it, and I thought it was a good use of the term.
Thanks, and, and I think one of the things that I was really trying to do is to make sure that, um, uh, and, that it's more forward-looking, that it is about how are we helping people? Uh, what the pandemic taught us is that there are so many people that are just one, one incident away from catastrophe. So, how can we make sure, um, like, for, with our workforce development work? How can we make sure that we're helping people to build that longer-standing approach so that they can weather those storms in the future? Um, making sure that we're coordinating with state and county and local nonprofits so that we know that that network exists, so it's not always us. We know, hey, these other organizations can provide housing. We know that these other organizations, um, but one of the things that the pandemic taught us was that we didn't necessarily have all of that. So, this is really more about not creating new work for staff, but really making sure that the pro, that the, the council is aware of all of the work that staff are already doing to implement, um, effectively, a lot of the COVID-related activities that they still have to do because the money still have to be spent. So, the race equity.
This is totally fun. This, that's a great answer, Randy, that was a good job, all this, this is totally fun.
Alright, um, Councilmember DeBala, did you have a?
Yeah, I li, I like, I like the new number one. And looking at the highlights, the first one is about the lessons learned from COVID. And the second one's about ra- race equity, the third one, um, I, I'm still struggling with.
I'm struggling with that one too.
But identifying gaps and filling them to the degree that we can. I, I get that, that's good. Um, sanctuary city, um, hopefully not a lot of need for that priority right, no, right now, but. But good that it's there. Um, I have some wording suggestions, I don't need to go over them now. I did have one question, within the goal of COVID pandemic lessons, that first bullet, first strategy seems, it seems like a lot all at once, and maybe there's two things going on there, and we might wanna break them out, because that might be why everybody's struggling with that first bullet, because there's just a lot in there. Um, there's businesses, there's residents, there's, there's spending money, there's future stability. Let, let me work on it, but I think that, that's, um, that's a thought. And then, and when we get to equity, to the second one, race equity.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask if you've got, if you had even noticed that I sent you an email about that.
Might not have.
Might not have, okay, I'll, I'll re-up it, because I had some, some more current wording ba- based on our conversation from last, last week to suggest.
One thing that I, um, kind of going back to, um, the first goal, one of the things that we would be helpful, um, is in some sections, we have major projects, initiatives, and ongoing activities, and others, we don't. Um, so.
And here you don't have.
And here we don't have that.
You don't have the obvious.
Yep, so, it might make sense to put in the priority activities, um, related to the ARPA plan here.
Yeah, and, and there are other things in the ARPA plan besides funding that ensures recovery through emergency assistance.
Mm-hmm.
There's long-term recovery-type programs, there's community operations that serve, serve a need that, that was highlighted during COVID, but was there already.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's what I mean about breaking that down a little bit.
Yeah, but one of the.
It, it leaves you with the impression that it's all about emergency assistance, which is not.
Yeah, and, but some of these, um, other ARPA-related projects are, they're other places, like the community navigators, like, a lot, there's a lot that's, like, worked in other places.
Alright, then let's just slide that.
So, we may need to just make sure that for all of these goals and strategies that we have, the major projects, initiatives, and that the ARPA piece is, those ARPA-related projects are highlighted, so it's clear.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for taking this on.
Um, and so, for the race equity work, I apologize, Councilmember DeBala, I missed your email. Um, but this one included quite a bit of feedback, and, and I kind of took this, um, uh, straight as it was, um, developed. Yep, um, it was, it was tweaked quite a bit, there was some, there was some new language in there, but I, I did kind of take this straight on. Um, but if there are others that have thoughts about this one, just let me know. Um, one thing that was there was a cultural plan, and I did tweak, because that cultural plan was from 2018. And so, I tweaked that to revisit or update if we need to, but, um, that's just something to flag. Um, okay, so the next one, the, uh, goal of identifying programming needs in the community and develop approaches to meet those needs, emphasizing youth, families, seniors, and residents who tend to face barriers to opportunities such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, immigrants, those with unsustainable lower-paying jobs, immigrants, and the people with developmental disabilities. Um, and so, with this one, um, there were some, some things that were tweaked. Um, so utilize residents' surveys, um, staff and community reports, program attendance, racial equity assessment tools, and other evaluative or outreach approaches to determine existing gaps in program offerings and develop programs to close identified gaps. Improve equitable access to programming and services in government decision-making using innovative strategies and technologies, such as exploring ways to fill gaps and access to technology and library services to reach residents, including residents of color, immigrants, and renters who rarely engage with the city. Now, this is one item that, um, we did, uh, it may have an ARPA component, because we, we do have our hot, we tried to address some of this, um, through the library work with the hotspots and, um, the fact that people can now borrow computers and things like that. So, um, we may want to identify, um, some key, uh, programs or key activities for this one too. And, um, as well as a community navigator, um, so this should be kept, explore, establishing, but we did. Um, we have the community nav.
You made it establish.
Oh, you made it establish?
I did.
Uh, sometimes when I was moving stuff, it just, it just got lost.
Yeah, there was.
So, this should just be.
As you said, the edit, the, the edited document was, quote, "a hot mess." It was very hard to follow toward the end there, and I really appreciate having a clean, a cleaned-up version to work from. Thank you for that.
No worries. Um, so, that bullet should not say "explore, establish," and a pilot, it should be "establish" the community ambassador or navigator program. Because that is another ARPA activity.
Is it a pilot one?
Uh, that's a good point.
We need to check that.
It depended on how much money.
How much money we had. Yeah, so.
We're gonna do a pilot before it gets rolled out in big time, but I don't.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point, Councilmember Gibson, we need to just triple-check, um, whether or not that was established as a, um, a pilot. But, in, in essence, what it is, is, um, we did, if I remember correctly, we did earmark some money for, for that program under the ARPA. Um, so, just making sure that we call that out is something that we would want to, want to move forward with. And then, um, so it would be, you know, check-ins as relates to our hot, hotspot distribution as well as the community navigators. And then there was a piece of continue to use low-tech solutions that acknowledge the existence of the technology divide within our community.
Yeah.
Um, now, this one came from, if I remember correctly, I'd found it in one of the documents, but this was one that I wanted to, to see whether or not, um, we still needed it.
I'm looking at Councilmember Gibson, did you draft that, or did I? You did, okay. I, I mean, I, I firmly support it, uh, but that's, you know, unless there's, unless you feel like it fits somewhere else underneath something else. I, I, I really appreciate it being made explicit, it's something, I, I mean, I hope we can work towards it. It doesn't necessarily have to say low-tech, but, um, you know, we need, we need some further, uh, systems of communication, for sure. I guess, I, I guess if, yeah, maybe that's over-explicit, is that what you were thinking? Over, overly, uh, prescriptive?
I just, I just wanna make sure that I understand, um, what our, what this goal is compared to. Um, there's, um, quite a bit of, um, things related to, if I remember correctly, communication. When we get to the, um, engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government. And so, I was just trying to make sure that I understood, um, whether or not this relates to, um, um, identifying program needs? Or is it about trying to reach hard-to-reach populations and trying to use a no, a low-tech approach?
It's about, it's about communication, so I just see, like, moving it.
Okay. Okay, so, this would be moved to?
I, I will say, though, it, it is, uh, given that this is about creating a community of belonging, I see this myself, I mean, I'm not the one that drafted it, but I see this as being. I see this myself, I mean, I'm not the one that drafted it, but I see this as being a different, different than, because it's underneath where we would provide our programming it, for the city versus, whereas the other one, at least the way it's currently worded, I'm look, I'm like, it's the second goal under number four you're talking about. That's really focused on, you know, municipal government activities and community affairs. I, I mean, to me, that's, that's a kind of a government civil society engagement question. And maybe I'm not, maybe my reading of it is too limited, but those are two very different things.
So, so this goal that we're talking about right now is about identifying program gaps. So, and what methods could we use to address gaps?
Right.
So-
Versus civil society and governance issues.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, for example, I mean, I, just as an example, I just drafted my own newsletter in English and Spanish for my residents on paper. Had to figure out places to put it around, walk over to bus stops and distribute them. That's an example of a low-tech solution. Maybe, maybe community navigators are a future pathway for that, but at the moment, our city doesn't have anything that I'm aware of besides our monthly newspaper that does that kind of thing. So if that's what Councilmember Foulter was getting at, that, that's, it is definitely a gap that exists is something low-tech to get to these populations, and it may be, or it may not be, that the navigator's program will helped, it will help, but will it be enough? Yeah, I don't know. There is a technology divide.
Since I see the advancing a community of belonging in racial equity is something that should be intertwined in all of the, of the priorities, I am okay with moving it to the communications since it is in fact a communication piece. And I was specifically thinking about the things that Councilmember Hansak is talking about, and even like lessons learned from distributing the, the ARPA funding, right? Like we've had to go pretty low-tech on that. Like it has been, you know, one person talking to another in order to make that happen. And so just making sure that we're keeping that in mind in order to meet the needs of some of the people in our community.
Should we, so that, that's really helpful. Should we, should we figure out how to incorporate that low-tech approach to gathering information that's in bullet one? So we could, I could streamline this a little bit, but utilize resident surveys, staff and committee reports, program attend, attendance, racial equity, feedback, or low-tech solutions and other evaluat, and other evaluat, evaluative or outreach approaches to determine existing gaps. Like basically figure out some way to make sure that we're getting the word out so that we can understand what certain gaps may exist in our programming. I'm just trying to keep us-
As tight as possible.
As tight on the goal, which was about identifying a programming need, or how we would go about identifying gaps in programs that we need to provide.
Or just move it to-
Or just move it to communications, which is what-
I see, I, I think it, I think that with what you're saying, I would prefer it under communications because what I really want is not just the programming needs, like all of the needs. And so I think that if we put it under communications, it broadens it, and so I'd prefer it under communications with what you're saying. I think it makes more sense there.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I, our last session on this, I thought we were dropping programming. We were going to say identify needs.
Yes, so that, that got, that got, I was gonna say that too, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so, so I'm a little, I mean, I, I guess this, I, I'm not sure what the distinction is. I mean, programming needs, I guess you look at the programs that we have and whether they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and reaching all the people it can. If that's what's intended here, then programming needs stays in, but we had talked about identifying the needs of folks more broadly, and that, that may be too, too much. So I'm, I'm just raising a question that we had talked about earlier.
Yeah, so in my mind, I, I get, I get what you're saying in that program, identifying needs is important, but there is a difference in terms of what we, as a city, can develop a program around to address, right? So the, the original kind of language was a little bit more around identifying and engaging the community to understand what we or how we may need to be able to within our sphere of, you know, our budget, our constraints legally we're able to address, to come up with programs to fix or to try to address versus just gathering information. But I think what you're saying is true. We can take the programming needs out, and our strategies can still be, we could take programming out and just say identify needs in the community to develop and develop approaches to meet those needs. But our strategies will be more around our programs.
Yeah, so liter- literally what we, what, what I wrote down that what we agreed on a couple of weeks ago was identify and prioritize-
Yeah, we had to prioritize, yep.
Programs and approaches to meet the needs of blah-da-da-da-da-da-da. So we were, and then the programming response in the strategies. Do you want me to write that down or do you got it?
And so you prioritize, it, it helps you get, you know, identify which programs that we can actually address or not.
Yeah, got it.
Can I make one other comment? And again, I'm not sure whether it, it, it is a similar question to what was considered about low-tech solutions. And that is, I, I think that in terms of identifying and pro, at least identifying program needs, that one of the approaches is to use our neighborhood, tenant, and civic organizations. And we don't really talk about using partnering with anybody in, in this, in this, in this, among the strategies, so that's a suggestion.
My comment on, if I may, my comment on that is that it may be that on Maple Avenue, there are, there are tenant associations, but that's not true for any of the buildings that I'm, that I've worked with.
We have no tenant associations.
So I wouldn't want to say we want to put a focus on, I would, I would be fine with putting a focus on developing them, which I think is already something the housing staff has, is doing. But to say that we want to rely on neighborhood and civic organizations and tenant associations when, in a lot of the parts of the city they don't exist, doesn't really work for me.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sitting over here feeling, I, I, maybe we need to change the verb on here, but I, I, and I didn't write this, but I'm, I'm feeling pretty strongly that I'd like something very explicit about low-tech solutions in relation to our programming. I just, it's, I'm not, this is so fundamental to everything I hope to accomplish in the next two years while on council for, on behalf of my ward. We are going to require some low-tech solutions of some sort, and I hope that I can be working in tandem with our city staff to that end and, and feel like we're holding ourselves accountable somehow. So I, I'm happy to work on that language and where it fits exactly, but I, I, I don't have the answer in my mind yet.
I think it might be helpful when we, as we continue to move through this. There are a number of places in terms of communication where there was language added around working in tandem with council and staff to come up with approaches of communicating with the community. So I think that there are places that, where I tried to mail things together in a way that might get at, get at that point. Especially if we're, if Councilmember Foulter's okay, we move it over into the communications section, then that whole story may, may fit together quite nicely.
I, I'll just follow up with Councilmembers DeBala. The fact that we don't have tenant associations or neighborhood associations everywhere doesn't mean that they aren't resources that we should reach out to. And it's, it's, in some ways, it's related with, we might reach out to them through the pilot community ambassador navigator program. So I, I just, it's, it's, I feel, I feel strongly about we look at our civic organizations and use them as best we can.
I think the concern is, is equity, right? Because like, how many times are you going to hear from the people that belong to those organizations? When we, you know, when they, when we have people like in Councilmember Hansak's word who don't have those organizations, and so does that provide them another method of getting access to the city?
I think, what, I, I will say, and this is just from an editing perspective. If you add every single organization and every single type of person, then it is just people. So you don't have to go through and list every single type of person because you get to a point where it's everyone. And so then you're just using a lot of words when one word will do, and it's just everyone. So if, if it is the case that we, in the first strategy, we're talking about, we talk about resident surveys, which is designed to go out to individuals, staff and committee reports, which gets at all of the committees, program attendance and information we're getting from people who are coming to our events, different assessment tools, other evaluative or outreach approaches. The other outreach approaches could mean reaching out to those civic organizations or different groups and the like. I don't think we have to be so overly prescriptive. There are, there is language in other sections of this document when we get particularly to housing where there may be some, some cleaner ways where we might want to strengthen engagement with tenants' associations or the like. But I don't, I don't think that we need to be overly prescriptive when it comes to this particular goal.
I suggest that we move, move to the next section.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I think Sanctuary City is fine, alright. So- You know what? We're, we're, we're gonna be fine.
With regard to the Sanctuary City one, I would just like, isn't that where we're?
Yeah, we, yeah, go ahead, Sanctuary City.
I would just like to say that, that even though people may think that, that ascribing yourself to a policy like that is, I don't know, whatever they think. The reality is that given where we are and anecdotally some of the things that happened with regard to the immediate jurisdictions around us being a sanctuary city and having the commitment that we have to, to gender equity, transgender people and homosexual people, this is actually a supremely important thing. And if it is such that we have to organize ourselves or the public policy associated with this town to deal with that, whether that means that in the future there is a, a change in policy at the federal level or something like that with regard to sanctuary cities, I would just like to say I wouldn't care. I think we should do it.
Thank you. Alright. Councilmember Gibson?
Oh, well, I, I, I guess I'm not sure that it, it, I, if it, if it, again, like I said, if it, if it, if it costs and where it's not essential, I, I don't know.
I think ensuring that that's the-
I like the symbolic, I like the symbolic value of this, and, and that may be enough of a reason for us to put it in. But again, we're talking about-
It's not about-
I'd just like to reiterate that we have a government that is associated with a lot of outward-facing, very public statements about any number of things. And I would just like to say to anyone that got elected, don't get scared now because, you know, we are already as a city committed to any number of things. And if you want to be the person that takes all those things off the board, then you're going to be the person that takes all those things off the board, whoever it is.
I just want to say that one, I think that if, if folks are under the illusion that our rights as a sanctuary city are still being up, are, are protected because of a transform, a new president or that we are not going back to where we were, that is, that is a fallacy. And I, and I hate to keep pulling up my experience. I've, I've been a Black woman all my life, and I can tell you that when people want to be, when, when you have enough people in a country that are prejudiced, it doesn't matter who the president is because that can change in a minute, and your, your rights could just go by the wayside. So if our goal as a city is to truly embody what the principles in which we are preaching, which is that we are a city for all, that we are a belonging community, and yet we are not doing the basics, establishing the floor of ensuring that everyone in our community is protected, then this is just performative. This is, this is, if we can find the money for some of our sustainability things, we can find the money to protect the people who live here. And, and that is, you know, and I don't want to go there, but I, I do think it's extremely important. And so we have to prioritize our sanctuary city standing, and we have to prioritize making sure that we're able to protect and cause those residents. I mean, we heard last night during the, or was it Monday? During the Ward Five meeting that there's a lot of people in our community that because of their immigration status are afraid to report crimes, they're victims, and, and yet if we send a signal that we are not a safe place for them, then that has broader implications for our community.
I could provide some anecdote too, if you'd like. I could do that too.
No, 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 I think it's-
I withdraw my objection, I withdraw my, my request to, to take it out. And I will just say that I hope we don't have to put a lot of priority on it, but I hear you loud and clear. You, you, you make an excellent point. You never know when it's going to change.
You don't live around pork, you don't know what the guilty-
And, and frankly, I, I'm sorry, I have to speak on behalf of my ward. We have, and, and I know that I'm not the only ward. You know, thirty percent of, of my, of my ward is almost exclusively Spanish-speaking. Many of them are not here legally, and they live here, and they've lived here for many years, eleven years, fifteen years longer. And I, I, I just can't say enough about the fact that part of the reason I live here myself is that I am willing to put resources, my own personal resources, and I believe in that as a, as a fundamental tenet of our city, that it needs to be explicit, it needs to be clear that we are ready to put resources behind it. And, and we aren't doing enough yet, in my humble opinion. I was not, I was not, I, I hope that next time I have a public safety meeting that I will be able to have live translation in Spanish. I think that is one thing we owe to some of our immigrant communities as a sanctuary city, and having it here explicitly helps make that really clear. Thanks.
Thank you for giving- Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I would just like to thank the mayor for her elegant, eloquent statement on the position herself, but also I am so proud to be on a council that so many of the council members have taken that same position. Thank you to all.
Thank you.
If, if I might, I was trying to back up my council member here with questioning whether it was necessary, and it does seem to be necessary, and I totally agree with that too.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on, y'all. We're gonna be here all night. Sustainable, fiscally sustainable government. So for this one, we have a number of goals. I tweaked the language a little bit just so it could kind of read a little cleaner. But the first goal is explore expanding city revenue options to identify long-term solutions necessary to diversify the city's revenue streams. The first is increase advocacy and lobbying activities at state and county levels Uh, the first is increase advocacy and lobbying activities at state and county levels to advocate for additional revenue sources for municipalities. Identify and analyze potential alternative revenue sources for the city within current authorities. Actively pursue external federal, state, and county grant funding opportunities to meet short-term city goals. Promote economic development to increase the tax base and revenue options consistent with the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then build on organizational assessment and other recent analysis to explore cost-saving alternatives to program and city service delivery. Um, and then the desired outcome is a more, more diverse set of revenue sources. Councilmember Small.
Um, I'd just like to say, having, uh, gone through this document, that, uh, this again is, uh, seems to be a pretty specific set of circumstances for a, uh, charge to a municipal government that is run by professionals. Um, but I would also say here that, um, any person or, or group of people on the, on the council that is expecting some sort of miraculous revenue stream is missing the realities of what you can do with, uh, municipal governments and revenue streams. Um, in particular, there probably have to be some sort of changes to the charter if you were gonna like own property. Um, and also, um, if you run any sort of a program, um, or you put another fee on people, um, you're looking at maybe, um, what, we got seventeen thousand people here? You know, you know, you get ten, or you get ten dollars a person. You're only looking at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that burns up with two staff people in a year, um, which, once you do benefits and everything else. And so, it's important for people to not hang their hat on things that are not going to be realities and/or things that they think are miraculous pie in the sky things. Personally, since we don't have a tree polit- or since we don't have an overall tree assessment policy here, I am probably coming for tree stuff, tree hugging. No, we don't have a, one of those things where, we used to do them, where you have someone go out and look at all the trees, and then everyone knows what their tree is like and/or what the timeline or potential realities for their tree are. Um, we don't have one of those. And so, when people start talking about sustainability stuff and how thorough we are about it, that's probably where I'm gonna look officially.
All right, Councilmember Fulter.
Um, I, I guess I kind of agree with, uh, what Councilman Small is saying as far as, uh, maybe I would like the goals moved around. Like, I agree that we should explore expanding the city revenue options, but maybe that shouldn't be our first goal listed. Um, I think that, um, it would be nice after we tighten these up, if we as a council sort of looked at the goals and thought which order they should go in.
Okay, prioritizing, you know, no, that's a really good point, like prioritizing the goals within the, mm-hmm. Okay. All right, so that's goal one. Goal two.
Could I just, uh, add?
Yes.
One, one point on the one, two, three, fourth, promote economic development, which I, I certainly, um, encourage, to increase the tax base, base and revenue options. Right now, our, when we bring businesses in, they don't, that, you know, we don't have a sales tax. I mean, so I'm not sure that we're increasing the tax base or revenue options by, um, I, I'm just a little, um, not sure what the right wording is there.
So, in terms of the sales tax piece, that would fall under advocacy because I know that, um, MML in particular has been trying to explore a bunch of different options.
It's not conferred upon cities currently.
Yeah, it's not, cities aren't allowed to do it. So, that's one thing. And then in terms of economic development, um, I think, and I, I, you know, definitely deputies, actually Deputy City Manager, um, you know, the, the, the point of economic development is around bringing in more people who can, who, building our, our population and our PECs who can pay, right? Or increasing in, in many, in many cases, the assessed value through upgrades in our commercial districts or upgrades along New Hampshire Avenue. So, all of that matters. And I think one of the things that is often, um, misunderstood is economic development is, is sometimes viewed by some, not all, as some encroachment of taking things away from people. Um, but it's not. It is actually providing resources, additional resources in a community. I cannot tell you how many times people are like, oh, well, in Rockville they do this, and in Gaithersburg they do that. Well, they both have large town centers.
Vertical, and they're vertical. They got lots of people.
So, there's a lot more wiggle room in their budgets to do things. And so, I think that that is, uh, just, oh, oh, uh, and again, not trying to sway people one way or the other, but it is a very realistic thing to say if we, we have to expand our tax base in some way, and economic development is one way to do it.
And I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
This is awesome place for me to add to this, and I would just like to say.
Councilmember Smalls, um, Councilmember Gibson has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it, I didn't know, I thought it was.
As I said, I support economic development. I'm just questioning whether it brings in, uh, uh, more, how, how it brings in more revenue. It potentially does. Uh, if the businesses are prospering, then the property owners hopefully will be, uh, property owners will probably be paying more for, for property taxes. It, I just don't want it, is people to think that if we bring in businesses, we're gonna, you know, or there's going to be a lot of money coming in because of that, because it's, it's indirect. I, I support it in part because it's quality of life issue. When we have, when we have businesses to go to, we walk to ourselves, that is something that's a positive quality of life issue, uh, for our, our community. And I have spoken about, uh, to, uh, the economic development, um, uh, manager about looking at it in a, in a revenue sense. And anyhow, I just wanted, I'll, I'll not say more, but it, it is not a, a, a panacea in terms of bringing in lots of extra cash.
Councilmember Small.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I'd just, uh, like to reiterate that we do have, um, uh, well, we have three bids now, business improvement districts in, in the, uh, city, uh, one of which is codified. Um, part of the reason for that is, is to try to hold a standard whereby, um, businesses have to, uh, ascribe to so they're clean and whatever. Um, the reality of that in Ward Six is, is that the rents are, uh, astronomical for those businesses. And, um, so the property owners are living fat and happy. Um, and so, uh, I, I would reiterate that if you have a wealth and concentration of people, then the people who own the properties where people go to business always get paid because someone will put a new business in there. And so, we have a variety of ways in which we try to make sure that those things occur, including the business improvements districts, which are people who we pay, um, as staff people. In addition, we have our economic development person as part of the human, or as a part of that department, um, who's specifically designed to be able to go speak to developers and other people and try to induce them to come here, particularly after we have boondoggles of, um, uh, groups of residents that undermine, uh, legitimate processes and developers who think that they can do whatever they want to us because we are talking stick people who hug things like trees. And so, when we talk about adding more people here to add density and verticality, um, that is to the benefit of all of the people who live places where they're not going to get verticality because there is no place to build. And so, I reiterate that every single time someone says something that is not technically correct during this process or any other, based on some desire that is not consistent with actual government, I will make note of it, and I will reiterate that good government requires people to do it and that good government requires people to hustle for it and that people who do that municipally know what they are doing, choose to do it. And if you've never done it, or if you've been a Fed, or if you were lucky enough to have some sort of, um, other reason to be here, um, playing guitars or hugging trees or whatever it is, like, you don't really know. And so, I am proud of the fact that the mayor has provided a document that provides a degree of deference to the staff and acknowledges the fact that there are policy proposals that have long and complete areas of interest for people who work on those areas. And so, it is probably not in anyone's best interest to be too general about their distaste for government when we are trying to make some government.
Okay, um, so let's move on to the next one. Uh, goal two, explore ways to provide a more equity, um, more equitable, I just realized that. Um, equitable property tax assessment system, including providing property tax adjustments to residents in need. And so, the strategies, advocate at county and state levels for changes in property taxes to assist residents in need, explore and promote city property tax credits, deferrals, and other options for residents in need, and advocate for such options at the county level. Um, continue to examine and advocate for changes in the city's property assessment process to ensure an equitable approach. Okay.
Awesome.
Okay. Next one. Um, continue to build on improvements in the budget process, presentation of budget information, and communication to residents. All right, so the strategies. Develop innovative budget processes to identify ways to present a budget development framework, summary as well as detailed budget information in a way that is easy to understand. Provide opportunities for resident feedback on the budget with an emphasis on equitable access and outreach. Identify baseline performance measures under key develop, um, departmental line items to highlight the link between budget decisions and anticipated strategic outcomes. And then the desired outcomes, continued work towards greater clarity and transparency in the budget process and increased resident understanding of the city budget.
Seems good. Do we have concurrence?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, so the next one. Adopt sustainable investment and banking policy and practices. The strategy, take the next steps recommended by Resident Task Force to adopt sustainable investment and banking policies and practices, taking into account the concerns raised by the Nuclear Free Committee, by Truist Bank, and considering requiring, required staff, resources, and status of automated financial systems and financial costs to implement. Work to align the city's banking and investments with the community's social responsibility values.
I, I don't have a problem with it, but it does seem like very specific compared to most of our, most of our goals or, or strategies.
I wanted to cut it, but I, I, I. I did, but I can push it. Wait, let, let me go to this next one, and then you all tell me whether or not this is really just a strategy under the next one. So, um, I tweaked, um, what was the language? Um, the one, um, maintain adequate reserves in the various city reserve funds for long-term fiscal sustainability. So, I tweaked that to broaden it, to, um, establish the city's long-term fiscal sustainability strategy. And it includes, review city policy on the appropriate level of unassigned reserves that should be maintained and determine whether updates are needed, and that's at seventeen percent. Establish policies for the appropriate level of reserves in the equipment replacement reserves, facilities maintenance reserves, and other reserves, as well as considering establishing new reserves where needed for new programming and long-term financial planning. Manage the city's ARPA funds to ensure responsible fiscal management and the spending, and, and that should be, and that spending complies with federal requirements. And so, it could, one question is, do we want to also say, take the next steps recommended to adopt sustainable investment and banking policies and practices under aspects of that long-term strategy? That works? Okay. Now there's a place to put it. Okay.
I like the newly worded goal, I think that's a, yeah, I think it's a step up.
Can I ask a question about the first strategy? Do we need to review the policy, or do we need to make sure that the reserves get the money? Which one did you mean, or did you?
All right. So, this is what happens when I, I'm typing and thinking and I'm trying to combine stuff.
Seventeen percent is the three months and that's.
Yeah, the seventeen percent is the three months, but I, I was wondering about whether or not, based on like the fiscal outlook, like the financial outlook and other things, if, if the seventeen percent, although it's okay now, the seventeen percent in my views establishes the floor of what our reserves need to be. And it could very well be the case that that floor could be, may need to be lifted as part of a longer-term strategy. So, once we kind of have that financial outlook and we kind of see where we are as a city, the council may have to make a decision and say seventeen percent is good, but we may need to move to twenty. And so, that's kind of what I was thinking. But again, Councilmember Dabala, you, you lived alongside me with that seventeen percent.
And I'm also thinking we're a little ahead of ourselves. Can we put a pin in this one till at least next week? Um, where we hear what the long-term fiscal picture looks like, and then we might be in a better position to know if we need that specifically or if we need some other shape, you know, flavor of that.
I like the general way that it's been worded because actually it is in my mind that, and, and I may be mistaken once we hear our financial health, uh, but that, I hope I won't get pinned on this, but, so, that, that perhaps, uh, given that we just went through COVID, it seems to me not illogical at all that this was a time when we would have tapped very logically our reserves. Um, I don't know why, I, I feel like I haven't heard too many people saying that up here on the dais, maybe because people don't, I don't know, I don't know why. But it seems like this is a time when we would have very logically tapped our reserves, and therefore, we may not just be talking, when we review the city policy, we may not just be talking about whether it should be seventeen percent or shouldn't be, but whether we talk about, you know, how long should it take us to refill our reserves? Um, under what circumstances would we be tapping those reserves? Uh, that to me would be kind of what we would do when we review the policy, um, and, and have that kind of conversation. So, I, I like it because it gives us all of that leeway to have that kind of more broad discussion than just have we or have we not tapped the reserves? Well, that's not to me the question.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I, I tried to draft it in a as-needed to determine whether or not updates are needed because Councilmember Dabala, to your point, and Councilmember Hansak, to your point, we don't know. Um, it could very well be the case that, um, seventeen percent is appropriate. Um, what we should maintain over the next two years, perfectly fine, and maybe we just focus on the levels for our other reserves. I just thought that it might be a good thing to signal to staff that we want to make sure that we're looking at all aspects of our reserve policies. And if based on, um, what we see in terms of the financial forecast or what we may see in terms of the budget, if there is a need, again, not before this budget because there's no time, but if there is a need, um, over the course of the next two years where we need to revisit, um, our policies, we would have the ability to do so. But it, it could, it could also be the case that as we've heard from our, um, our, uh, auditors, the seventeen percent is, is appropriate. Um, and so, just trying to see whether or not that's something that we want to review as, as, and to see whether or not that needs to be tweaked. Um, so we can, um, I'll flag it. I also will, um, follow up with our, um, finance director about that one too. Okay. Alright, well, that went over well. Alright. Let's get to the party. Environmentally sustainable community. Alright, so, I, I am going to be honest, there's a lot here. Um, I, I tried to, I tried to, um, capture what I, I think, but I think what, um, Councilmember Fulter mentioned earlier around prioritization and maybe prioritizing the goals or prioritizing, thinking through the strategies might be helpful. So the first goal, um, climate change mitigation, work towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions goal by 2035. The strategies prioritize that accelerate policies and programs that implement the 2020 Climate Emergency Response Framework Strategies for buildings, transportation, renewable energy, and a fossil-fuel-free community. Update on an annual or biannual basis greenhouse gas emissions contributed to the, contributed to and reduced by city operations in order to improve our carbon profile and serve as a model to residents. Continue and expand city sustainability programs with emphasis on equity issues and on engaging all types of city residents in terms of, um, in terms relevant to them. Coordinate and advocate for climate change mitigation resiliency and sustainability funds and programs with state, county, state, region, and federal governments. And then integrate, um, city climate goals and strategies with other city policies and programs, such as urban forest, housing, economic development, and Vision Zero Transportation Goals.
So, all of, four of the, four of the five of these are the same or similar to what was in the last, um, in the last few. The one ad, um, that, I can't remember who made it, it may have been me, was continue and expand city sustainability's with an emphasis on equity issues. The ad was end on engaging all types of city residents in terms relevant to them. The new one, I'm going to let the person who proposed it, um, explain that. I am not myself convinced we need it.
I, yeah, because I will say, and, and, um, and don't, I'm not exactly sure which one you're going to talk about, but the update on an annual or biannual basis, that, that seems pretty labor-intensive.
It is. I've done some research into it, but,
Okay, so.
Let the person who proposed it explain.
So for that one?
Yeah, um, I did talk about, uh, before, and it need not be, uh, uh, a, a rigorous financial, I think that's what the word that you, financial cost. I think that we need to do identify some, the, the fact that the city is, you know, contributes to and reduces, reduces greenhouse gases. And that, uh, some base, some fairly simple measures could be identified in terms of vehicle miles, in terms of, uh, cement, uh, and, and asphalt, uh, placement, or whatever the word might be. There are two or, I just think a few, uh, measures need to be determined to, to track what the city does to contribute to, to greenhouse gases, as well as what we're doing to, to reduce them with our, in, in the, uh, in terms of trees planted and other sorts of things. And anyhow, if, if, and, and again, as a, as to be a model to our citizens. We, when we build buildings, we should build green buildings, and, and, and every. Yeah, it should be, and so that would be a way, but, and so we're measuring what we're, what we're building, what, uh, what we're, how, how we're driving. And like I said, two or three measures would, would not be a, uh, I don't think a burdensome thing for the city to do in terms of the, um, the footprint. And then I, I think there's, we've got trees, um, and, and greens, other ways of measuring, what we're doing to reduce, reduce greenhouse gases. Let's be a model to our city, you know? I don't want to make it onerous, but I think if we, if we, if it were, if we give, give this, uh, direction, I think the staff could come up with some pretty easy and simple and useful, um, metrics.
Councilmember Fulter?
I, I don't say it a lot, but I also have a degree in environmental, environmental science. And so I am very much in favor of protecting the environment, but I'm also, we're in a city of seventeen thousand people, and there are certain things that are best done on a local level, and certain things that are best done on other levels. And I just want to make sure that we are choosing the items that we can act on the most effectively as a city. And that degree of environmental science, I got a long time ago, and so like, you know, I, I am going to defer to other people that are more up to date than I am. But, um, I think that the mayor kind of said it in that there's a lot of, a lot of, of strategies in here, and that I think that it would be great if we could hone down on the things that we can most effectively do. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, um, the, if, if everyone will bear with me for maybe a minute and a half. So the, um, and, and Councilmember Gibson, and I've already had this conversation. So, so you can take a break if you want. The city climate plan, um, looked at community greenhouse gas emissions, community-wide. It looked at buildings, transportation, all those pieces, community-wide. It did not zero in on c- city operations, because the direction was to look community-wide, and also because in the context, city operations, if all you're looking at is the impact, that's a small piece of the action. The model, acting as a model, is, is another, another question, and I agree, we should ask as a model. I, I think it's possible to do, to, to identify what, what the city operation, what the city has done already. Everything from, um, buying electric vehicles whenever possible, to, um, prioritizing the trash routes so that they take the least miles. A lot of the things the city has already done that aren't written down in a list, and look for the holes, and I have some ideas where some of those holes are. But going to an annual or a biannual greenhouse gas emissions model, um, modeling to separate that out, I went online, I looked at the status of, because I'm a little out of date, too. Looked at the status of, 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 um, ident- of model, of modeling and identifying greenhouse gas emissions, the, there really, there aren't any anymore. It's all been subsumed. You know, if you go back fifteen years, Cambridge, Massachusetts, Brattleboro, Vermont, they did city operational. But if you go online and look for the Excel spreadsheet that you could just take to your public works guy and, it's not there anymore, because it's a, the field has moved on. So I would, I'm not comfortable with committing our staff to doing an annual or biannual greenhouse gas emissions analysis. I am completely comfortable with saying, let's sit down, and as a part of our climate plan, and, and I, and it's in there already, so I'm not sure whether we need to say it again, but, sit down and say, you know, what are the things we've done, what are, where are the holes? And again, I think some of, we already know where some of the holes are. So if you want to reword it, or if you want to drop it, but that's my, my opinion.
I'd be happy to reword it with, with your help.
Okay, um, so Councilmember Gibson, um, we are really pressed for time. So, um, if, if you can send me your language, I'm, I'm going to need it tomorrow, I'm so sorry. If, if you can send me your language, um, that you're proposing so that we can see how to, how to fit it in, um, that would be really, really helpful.
Mayor, I do have some comments on this particular issue.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you. I would, uh, like to, uh, again, from the Department of Redundancy Department, say, um, that we do have a, a highly competent, um, staff, and that, you know, uh, among the municipal, uh, places, um, to work at the higher levels, this is like one of the, um, jobs that people covet, because they get a chance to work on policy that they, uh, care about. That being said, um, in order to, uh, obtain designations for Sustainable Maryland and whatnot, you have to have a green team and other things to move up the chain of command. Those things are usually organized with regard to both, um, staff and, uh, community input. We seem to have problems with ours. There is an outlet for any of these, uh, concerns. If you were trying to be consistent and good, uh, with regard to government, I would encourage people, uh, that as we go through the process of trying to figure out why it is that we are having, um, issues with regard to the minutes of, uh, green team meetings and/or their participation, that people who are interested in those things could find an outlet for such concerns. But that being said, um, insofar as we are trying to be one of the leading lights with regard to, uh, environmental awareness, we have in the past done some, uh, things that have put us on the leading edge, that were complicated. Move the, we even moved the county. Those things are cool, but those are policy decisions that the body makes in order to move forward. With regard to the specificity of any of those given charges, I'm completely comfortable with deferring to staff who've dedicated themselves to these issues over time.
Thank you, Councilmember Small, and, um, again, I just want to stress, 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 the prioritize and accelerate policies and programs that implement the 2020 Climate Emergency Response Framework Strategies. That's a lot of work. Right there. You could stop right there. So, um, making sure that we are, um, making sure that if we're adding something beyond something that is as much as implementing a big strategy, that it is something that is, one, not already incorporated in that strategy, or two, something that is extremely, extremely, extremely important for us to make sure that we get done. Okay, alright, next item.
Just one thought. What, I, I could drop the whole bullet by, instead, in the first edit, prioritize, accelerate, and report, and report on. I'm just saying I could, you know, I could pull it up. But it does, it says, it does accelerate means one thing, but I'm just report on it, so it's all.
We could say prioritize, accelerate, and report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's really what I'm asking us to do, is to report on, on what we're doing.
Okay. Okay, alright, we're almost there. Come on, y'all, stick with me. Alright. It's okay. Alright. Oh, I got one, no, I got rid of one. So we only have five now. We're almost there. Alright. Climate change resilience.
So in, in this section, um, uh, the strategies, you have a streamlined set of strategies. They are FYI for people who haven't been reading. When you get the copy, um, to look at, this is different from what has been in previous years. First one focuses on stormwater, both public and private. The second one focuses on emergency preparedness, particularly with extreme weather and heat. The third one, um, does something that we, we started in 2019 and then dropped because of COVID, which is to look at the resilience, the recommendations that we already got in the Climate Action Plan. So to make a long story short, that's what you got there.
Alright, silence is acceptance. Alright, moving on to the next one. Manage our community's natural resources sustainably. Protect, maintain, and improve the health of our urban forests and ecosystems, natural resources and water quality with emphasis, with emphasis on equity. Alright, so the strategies here, there are lots. Um, and this is another place where we may want to consider reducing. Adopt the multi-year urban forest management plan with focus on no net loss, increase biodiversity, and equity in tree cover.
That's a, that's a rephrase of the one from before, which was to incorporate the overarching goals into the tree management plan, so.
Expand a pilot project for collaborative planting of trees in select neighborhoods with aim, uh, um, with the aim of helping to address inequities in tree distribution within the city.
Again, was there before.
Is that not a part of the urban forest management plan?
They have been separate, and I don't know whether they're together now. I mean, with planting trees.
Yeah.
So the city has already passed the pilot program.
Right.
Um, it is plant, it is doing the collaborative planting project, so I guess we could take the word pi- pilot out. But yes, they're separate, because one is a plan and the other is trees in the ground. Remember the $28,000 in the budget amendment?
That's right. That's right. Okay. Explore viability of using tree, city tree funds to motivate and enable lower-income property owners or those with higher numbers of trees to better maintain tree or, or grove health?
We have been discussing this with Marty, and I don't have closure on that yet. I just haven't had time to review everything he's given back.
Okay. So is this one that, um, you're, um, working on editing? I'm just trying to make sure that we're not.
I, I, yes, unless anybody who else, Shayna and, uh, and Councilmember Fulter and Councilmember Dabala were also on that, if, if you had.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that it needs editing. I, I also sort of asked the question about the, because I didn't know if what your concern is, is it the health of the trees, or is it, uh, is it like risk of the trees, uh, with falling limbs and stuff like that? So, you know, are we already close to what you're looking for with the program that we already have in place?
I think it fulfills some of the goals. I, I really feel like I may need a deeper understanding, so maybe the, the thing to do here is to move to some more general language about equity, um, and just sort of exploring whether we've exhausted the options on ensuring equity. Um, I mean, I know we've got equity in tree cover, but sort of equity in, in tree, tree maintenance, the, the costs of tree maintenance, or something about, you know, different distribution of trees. But I will, I, again, I, I, I'm happy to look at this, because this could take us a while if we're trying to talk through this. I need to read through some more comments from Marty. But I, I guess it's fair to say that I wonder whether, again, we're, we're too focused on the use of city tree funds and maybe haven't considered some other options about what, I, I don't know all the different policy levers that could be pulled, but I think, uh, I, I could hear, hear our discussion loud and clear that, you know, it could get very expensive very quickly to do a lot of these kinds of, you know, large blanket assistance to, to tree owners, because there are a lot of people, and so, I mean, that makes perfect sense. Also, it became very clear that the tree funds are already, uh, it is already possible within the urban forest management plan to use them for hazardous branches, right? So that was, that was very lucid. So again, I, I just think it's the ability to explore that a little bit further, because this was an ask from residents, and I don't have the prescriptive policy in my mind yet for what exactly is the best thing to do beyond what we're already doing. I just know that a lot of people are feeling like not enough is being done, so, um.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know what your residents were saying to you, and I don't know how much money is currently available in the, um, in the fund for, especially for addressing what you're talking about. But most people, when it comes to maintenance of the trees, what we're doing is removing hazardous limbs.
Right.
Right? Like, we're not doing extra, uh, we're not chopping off anything extra off of our trees. We're just getting rid of the hazardous stuff.
Right. Right, yeah, no, I think, I think it's just worth, worth brainstorming, um, but with our urban forest management team for sure, as the technical experts, so maybe we could just, anyway, I don't, I don't want to continue, it's very late. I think, I think we can, um, explore some other language there.
I had suggested that we actually deal with this during the urban forest management plan, which I think is coming up, isn't it?
It was delayed until May, I believe, right, May?
What's that?
In May.
In May.
So I, here's a suggestion that I have is, um, I would suggest if there's a need to tweak, that we, um, we maybe eliminate this bullet and add maybe a, a clarifying point to. and add maybe a, a clarifying point to the first bullet.
As a, as a thought.
As a thought. And then that, because I mean, I, I, again, I'm trying really hard to focus because we're, we, we mentioned these big plans a lot, and there's a lot of work within them. And so just making sure that, that the Urban Forest Management Plan, which includes a lot, if it touches upon this, then that's something that we don't necessarily need to explicitly call out. The next is.
Can I, can I just propose possibly something quite simple then if we do that, which I'd be open to because I do think there's a lot of nuance here, and I don't want to be too prescriptive, and equity in tree cover and, and tree maintenance? What do Dibala and Fulter in particular, who had more thought? Yeah, I think that would kind of hit the, that would enable and empower us to work towards that and have those discussions and feel like we're being accountable to our priorities.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was going to add, which is, I'm just wondering what Mr. Frye was thinking when you said tree maintenance, and he was like, oh, that could get really big.
It's true.
And it's, and so, yeah, I'm just.
Like fertilizers or whatnot.
Right, right, and so, yeah, I didn't, if you were just talking about what I think you were talking about, which is mostly the removal of, of hazardous limbs.
Yeah, he clarified that that's already.
There's a lot of vague language here in this strategy. So personally, I'm okay, like, we decide how we are going to interpret this, and we are going to discuss that with council. It just holds us, I mean, if someone has a more precise word, that's great. I, I, and I can see if I can think of one, but I'm comfortable with the vagueness because every other word is extremely vague. Equity, tree cover, I mean, biodiversity, it, it, they're just very, very vague.
Okay. Recognize and highlight the value and role of our ecosystem, ecosystem health in our public spaces through review, protection, and management of those resources. That was a very broad one, and I, I kept it in here so that we can discuss it. I didn't want to just cut everything. But one of the things that I wasn't sure about was whether or not this is something that would be addressed in our Public Space Management Plan, because we have major projects and initiatives. So is the idea to, to, to build upon that, like, what was, what was?
That's clearly what, what I was thinking about because I've been closely following the Public Space Management Plan. But I do think that it goes beyond the Public Space Management Plan in terms of, well, I mean, I put in here right-of-way parks and that kind of stuff. So that actually is included in, in that, is how, is, is, it's, it's both a, 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 a management issue. It's also a bit of a, an education issue about all, of, of, of the value of ecosystems and that we have, as I said last week, we have done a good job in the council, or you all have done a good job in the council with, with regard to tree canopy, but not with anything underneath the trees, not with the soil, not with the water, not with the native plants. So this is to broaden the attention that we pay to our ecosystems, and we do that partly through the Public Space Management Plan, but it might be broader than that.
Okay, so I know that a, a statement was made earlier about these goals, or these strategies being very broad. But the reality is there's, there's this fine line between being so broad that it's not able to be implemented and then being broad enough to allow for some flexibility. So like, for example, with the first item, adopt the multi-year Urban Forest Management Plan with focus on no net loss, increase biodiversity and equity in tree cover and tree maintenance, right? All of the, the specificity is in the Urban Forest Management Plan, right? And the resolution that established it. So for this particular strategy.
Do you want me to preface it with?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what the strategy was, other than we should just recognize and value and highlight. But I, I don't.
And, and, and we could say, I mean, if it's, I mean, I'm not, if, if, even if it just stays in with our Public Space Management Plan, our, our stormwater management plans also, I guess. I could, it could be narrowed to the pub, to the Public Space Management Plan if that would help. It's much like the first one. I think it's broader than that, but to move things along, I'm happy to just say, recognize, highlight, value, role of ecosystem. I mean, somehow we're used, adopt, it's not the adopt, I guess we do have to adopt the,
Yeah, that's still.
The public, public space management plan.
That's not as far along as the tree plan.
So I'll just.
So I think that's the best place to have that discussion.
So I will, I will put, adopt the, the Public Space Management Plan with, with this language, something of that.
Yep, I think that could work.
Yeah, it works fine with me.
And where, what's the status then of the minor master plan in terms of whether that's also, I mean, we have it listed as a major project underneath, but in fact, it's something that's going to come down the pipeline, right? Within the next year or two. I mean, that would, that would beg the question to me then whether it needs to be an actual strategy, explaining why we have it under this particular section. Because it's not exclusive just to environment. Yeah, no, I, I know, and actually, I'm, I'm asking myself, wait, do we not have it anywhere else in the whole document? It is, it is under the developments. Okay, I, I thought, I thought I had seen it somewhere else, I was, okay.
Yeah, and if it's not clear, I, I need to make it clear.
Sorry, under number five, you mean?
Yeah, it should be under five.
Yeah, it was there, well, I don't know.
I mean, I think because a lot of people have been thinking about the environmental sustainability of that site, I think that's how it landed there, maybe.
Yeah, let me.
Let's make sure it's, but I don't.
Just make sure.
I don't see it.
Oh, yeah, planning for the developments. Oh, I, I added it under the last strategy. Complete the minor master plan process for the Washington advantage area.
Thank you.
Blah, 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 so.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, so we need to just make this a minor master.
And the Public Space Plan might belong in number five, not in number three, but let's not worry about that tonight.
Yeah, we can, we can move them. Okay, so then that addresses your, your point, and there's aspects of environmentally sustainable development that's there. The next.
One la, one last comment, so that the Public Space Plan is not primarily about ecosystems. So it would need to be worded in a way that doesn't discount the bulk of what's already in there, which I'm sure you can think of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which will include a focus on education management of our ecosystems or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Conduct innovative culturally appropriate environmental outreach education to all residents in ways that connects, that connect the issues relevant to them, such as litter's effect on water quality.
I can't remember if that was me or, or Councilmember Small or us together. But trying to.
I was okay with this one.
Okay, yeah, well, I was just explaining where it came from because this one is new. But I was trying to capture that, that sense of, of explain, of, of people, of, of, of all of our residents understanding the importance of these things to them in terms they can relate to, yes.
No, I was just, I, I, I don't disagree with this in principle, but here's one of the places where I feel like there's so much detail under, under this goal about the environment, whereas, you know, we, we don't have, for example, conduct culturally appropriate outreach about, about our recreation opportunity. I mean, like, that kind of language, it just seems like, I, I just feel like it's a bit imbalanced here to have it all under here and.
Have it only about environmental stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that, that could be true. I'm, I'm open to that.
Yeah. I mean, we should always be connecting with issues relevant to folks. Yeah, it just seems like you should go under communications.
I just felt like it was important to say somewhere, and I guess that's where it wound up. And again, I'm not even sure it was me.
I'll, I'll take another look at this, at this one because sometimes aspects of education went with the relevant topic, and then other times, yeah.
Yeah, because this isn't education, this is, this is.
About making sure that people understand.
Well, that we understand what they think, too. Two-way street here, yes.
I, I think that.
Maybe it just belongs somewhere else.
That getting rid of the, such as litter's, water, litter's effect on water quality makes sense because that's, that's very specific.
Well, somebody wanted that, but I can't remember now who.
But, I mean, I, I do think that the, the culturally appropriate environmental outreach also has to do with, you know, us as a city learning what other cultures value.
That's what, yeah, two-way street, all right.
And so I, I, I can see why you put that in there.
Okay.
Just take out litter's effect.
Yep, we'll, we'll figure it out. Because I think culturally, you know, litter, I, I say it often, you know, we were given back in the day to give a hoot, don't pollute, but not everyone was taught that in their home country, so. So, okay, so we'll follow up. Consider ways to encourage native plantings and invasive removal on public and private property, including leveraging volunteer efforts and partnerships.
Also a new one.
So I know that the native plantings and invasives, like, that's, that's something that we, we do try to do as a city when it's appropriate to, meaning from the perspective of, of the tree health and, and where, and the placement and things. So that's something that we do try to do. So is the idea that?
We could do more of it.
Okay, and then leveraging volunteer efforts and partnerships? Okay.
Well, part of the reason why I'm here is because of trying to do some volunteer efforts in public space that was almost thwarted by the city in terms of trying to do, pull, pull, pull weeds and do different things. And we had some hoops to go through with the Climate Action Group to, to pull things. So this is to encourage that we, we, the city works with, you know, our residents to do these kinds of things as opposed to keeping us arms distance or making it difficult.
Okay, so, and again, I'm, I'm going, it takes people.
I see, yeah, I see.
It takes people to organize volunteers and identify projects and work with folks to get that stuff organized and make sure that it's happening within the, you know, I know that everyone, we are in Tacoma Park, and everybody feels like we should all just be able to kumbaya and do things together, but there, there are legalities around these kinds of events that have to be thought through. And so just wanting to bring up that there are potential budget implications for increasing these types of events that we would require staff time to support.
So I, I have two things to say. One is the native, the native plant, for me, the work that is happening now on native planting and native, and encouraging natives is, is great and is more than we had a few years ago, and I'm, and I'm good with it. And the part that I think is, is we should all think about is if we are going to embrace the neighborhood, neighborhood and resident partnerships, not just, this is one of those, what Kara said before, why just here? If that's a strategy that we want to employ, and I think it is, then, then let's put that in the, in the part, in the outreach, whatever that number, number goal is that talks about ways to do outreach education and partnerships. Let's put it there. So I see two different things going on here. But I, I think you had something else to say, I'm sorry.
I, I could, I'd be happy to say further consider or, or continue to encourage if you think that we're doing something now. I think we are doing something. So I, I don't mean to say that we're not doing nothing as a city, but I, I feel fairly strongly that, that we have a lot of missed opportunities of working with, 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 with residents.
But again, not just in this one area.
No, no, yeah, absolutely, but we're talking about, we're talking about a goal, which is manage our communities' natural resources. So I think it kind of belongs that we, we want to, it belonged here that we want to work with, with our residents to do more and involve them as much as possible.
Okay, so I'm, people are fading like wallflowers. Okay, you're, the, the, this bullet and the following bullet seem duplicative to me. So consider ways to encourage native plantings and invasive removal on public and private property, including leveraging volunteer efforts and partnerships. Support city staff to work together across programs and departments with civic group and others to further implement climate, environmental, sustainable, sustainability and other city priorities. So like, these civic groups, how is that different from leveraging volunteer efforts and partnerships? And is there a way that these two can be combined?
I think this second.
Nope, not mine.
The last one.
Because, because I, I, I mentioned that we had it already in here, and we had it in the climate plan and in the housing plan.
Yeah, yeah, that, I, I may have taken some notes from you, but, you know, no, I put this in. Let me put that together into one, one thing.
Into one, okay.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, and it doesn't have to be done now, but at some point over the next six months, maybe, so that we're not rushed to do it, perhaps it would be helpful for us to have a values statement that sort of elusive, sort of, that might capture things about sanctuary city, about native plants, about collaborative partnerships with civil society that might be kind of separate from the priorities and might clarify key values that the council would like the staff to bear in mind every time they, I mean, I, I know we have those in relation to racial equity and environmental sustainability, but I wonder, I wonder if that would be a way to bridge some of these things that it, it's, it's very particular, you know, you know, to, I, I think, when we're talking about encouraging native plants, that's something I'm sure that you would like to see across the board on any initiative done in city parks and ecosystems. But I, it, it strikes me as a across-the-board sort of value. I, I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense, but might be something, you know, parking lot for later.
Okay, so because we have, we have two more to go, I'm, I'm going to ask respectfully. I think these next two will, honestly, three was the hardest. I think the others will go quite a bit faster. So for engage responsive service-oriented government, I added back the goal of hiring and onboarding a new city manager.
That's the one who crossed it out.
Yeah, because we need it. And the strategies, conduct a successful search with community input and the assistance of a consultant, establish council and community priorities for the new city manager, including identifying ways to engage the community in the selection process, successfully onboard the new city manager, and work together to develop further plans and priorities working towards community identified visions for the future. So that's one. The next goal is improve city communications with residents and adopt innovative culturally appropriate initiatives to improve, that improved twice, I'm going to fix that, public engagement and collaboration with residents, particularly with residents who may face barriers to participating in municipal government activities and community affairs. The first strategy is develop the city's current communications tools, I mean, I'm sorry, improve the city's current communication tools, including city website and social media tools to increase public engagement and more easily and effectively share information. Expand the reach of city communications through bolstering city staff partnership with the empowerment of city, of council members facilitated communications within their ward. And that's one I, I do just want to touch base to make sure that that's exactly what we're talking about. Review lessons learned from recent more targeted community engagement efforts and apply them to improve public input, engagement, and collaboration.
Footnote, maybe that's the broader statement. Maybe that is the broader statement of, of our culturally appropriate discussion about environmental and climate issues. So when we said, do we need it only there? Maybe we need, we have it, maybe that's it. We could use that as an example if people don't understand what that means. Use the climate stuff as, or the litter stuff as an example.
Investigate and adopt ways to improve accessibility and community, of community meetings, especially for residents whose dominant language. um, especially for residents whose dominant language is not English, those who are deaf, deaf and others who may face barriers to engagement in city government. Continue efforts for more effective and engaged city committees and more closely reflect the, that more closely reflect the diversity of our community.
I want to go back to the goal for just a second and make sure that this sense we had before that it's a two way street of conversation is captured in the goal, and I think it is, but I just, for the other people who were discussing it earlier. Cause it's important that it's not just, oh, we're doing our regular stuff, we're just doing it in three languages. But, but rather that we really are trying to, well, what we were talking about before, do you feel like this captures, this goal captures?
I mean, I still think we should move that goal.
Uh, Mike?
Sorry?
Uh, I still think we should move the goal from where we had it before, um.
To over here, yeah.
To over here.
Okay, alright, I can work on that. Okay.
In this section somewhere. Or, or it might be subsumed in one of these. Yeah. Um, just trying to capture the two way street of collaboration, engage, you know, participation, engagement.
I think it captures the two way street.
Okay, okay.
Um, so I just want to make sure that I understand the thought behind expand the reach of city communication through bolstering city staff partnership and the empowerment of council member facilitated communications. Is the idea to kind of go to?
You or me?
I agree with it, but I don't think I put it in.
Oh, you didn't, okay, I can't remember, it was a collective thought that we've discussed quite a lot.
That, that we had a conversation.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was a collective thought that, uh, council member Gibson and I have had quite extensively. I, I don't know if that captures, I, I don't remember if I wrote it or you wrote it. Um, and, and if you, do you feel it's too prescript, or quite, quite prescriptive, is that what you're feeling?
It, it just kind of seemed, it wasn't very clear. So, um, I would recommend, um, getting rid of it and just say, um, improve the city's current communication tools, including city website and social media tools, um, by leveraging, um, oh, or we could actually add, um, council, if, if the goal, and I was trying to read in between it, in between the lines, if the goal is to say, hey, work with the council to use us as like a way to amplify your message, then we would just incorporate it as part of, um, the, uh, the first item. So it's about improving communication tools through the city website, social media and council outreach and, you know, and then that way you can tackle that, where basically what we're saying is.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Let us know when you're doing stuff, so we can make sure we're pushing stuff out as well to get.
Well, I, I do see it going a lot broader than that though, just to be clear. I think that, uh, I, I really think it would be great if in the future council members are given, uh, some, some funding for websites, if that's what they, each council member has a website, some support to, uh, get themselves going on, uh, various communication outlets, some guidance on how to do it, uh, a lot of those things. So I, I do think it's a little bit broader than what you've just stated, but I, I, I think it can go under the first one as you, as you kind of described, but I do see it as broader than that.
But if it's broad, if it's to your point around, um, council resources, then, um, that would then go into another one that is about, um.
Which I, I wrote, I think.
Where, where is that?
So I tweaked, I did tweak it, but it was about, um, council onboarding, I'm just trying to find it.
Council onboarding.
Yeah, so it should be, uh, yeah, um, yeah, so it should be go, under the goal, the next goal on the page, um, improve policies and processes to enhance resident interaction with the city government and council, including request for government services, complaint systems. Um, there I added, um, review and strengthen the process of new coun, um, process of new council member onboarding and technical assistance, and then we could say, including but not limited to, um.
So I don't know why I'm not seeing what we're talking about.
Yeah.
There's a second bullet on the next page.
Oh, I see it now, I'm sorry.
Um, which is much narrower than what I intended that was, that I had submitted earlier. Expand the reach of, uh, wait, I'm checking, uh, da, da, da. Review and strengthen the process of new council member onboarding and the ongoing support provided by city staff. So that's, um, that's, that's, that's not, that's not in here. In other words, it goes partly to what, um, council member Hansag is talking about, additional support for us to do our role better. I mean, as far as I'm, I mean, um, the, uh, that, that we, I think this deserves some real attention for us to review how we can work better with the city staff so that we can do our jobs better. And it's more than just getting onboarding, and it's, it's more than just being able to communicate with our constituents. I, I, I just feel that there's some functional, uh, imbalance in terms of information, resources, et cetera, that, uh, I struggle with as a new council member.
Perhaps I can propose, uh, that if we were to eliminate the language that we see on, under goal number two, under priority four, uh, and then we were to look at the language of goal number three, strategy number two, we could say something more like review and strengthen, uh, or rev, review and strengthen the utilization of council members as key communicators, um, of, uh, of, as key communicators within, within, within the city. Uh, and then you don't have to be so explicit about onboarding, uh, that's really, really specific. Uh, but it would, it would get to the heart of kind of what both of us are looking to get in here, I think.
I think, I, I think a cleaner approach would be to have the communications under the communications goal. And if it's a policy or procedural process, then we would have it under the, the, the language that is here. So, um, I added technical assistance. So it is the onboarding and technical assistance that's provided to council members. And that would allow for there to be, including, um, uh, website development, use of your phone, knowing where things are. Um, so I kind of couched that under technical assistance to make sure that council members, um, are able to obtain or have access to the resources you need to do your jobs.
Yeah, there's definitely an expectation in my ward that I will have a website and that I will have a blog, period. So right now, I am using my own money to do that, and I am a person of privilege who is able to afford to do that. But, uh, for someone else to do my job, uh, who, who needs the money that they're making from this job, uh, might not be able to afford to do that. Um, and I, you know, I recently realized that I had maxed out my number of blogs that I can send out, and so I just had to spend even more money, uh, in order to upgrade my website. And so, like, I, I think that though, you know, I don't know if this is the year to do it. Uh, you know, we're talking about trying to save money certain places, uh, definitely, uh, you know, researching, talking to each other, trying to figure, you know, create our own little task force of, like, what does this look like in order to be a job that, um, we can expect people to do reasonably?
I would, um, so, uh, would, yes.
In that regard, I would really love to see us put an explicit strategy, uh, to, to do something in that regard and, and kind of hold ourselves accountable by the end of the two years. I mean, I, I know we're trying to keep the documents succinct, but, I mean, to be really honest with you, it's one of the things I imagine spending the next several months trying to put together some strategy on that. So it, it makes sense to me that it would be a separate bullet, but that's.
Okay, I think I have what I need in order to turn your thoughts into.
Okay.
An action. Alright.
Can I add just, just one, one word on, you talked about technical assistance, and I just want to make sure it's not just technical assistance for the onboarding, it's ongoing technical assistance, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, in other words, for, not just after the first three months.
Okay. Alright, council member Deval?
I wanted to suggest, uh, we talked about, um, working, working with and strengthening neighborhood associations, tenant associations, et cetera, in a couple of different places.
Right.
And this would be the place to put it.
Uh-huh.
In here somewhere. And, um, if others agree, I can take a crack at it. It's not strictly communications, cause it's not just one way, but it's the best place to put it, I think. Strengthen partnerships and build capacity in community, in neighborhoods, tenants, associate, I don't know, is that already in the housing section?
I like that idea myself.
Okay, um, so I want to make sure that I can get us out of here in the next twenty minutes.
That's why I'm offering to write it and give it to you.
So let's, let's keep moving.
Yep.
I think I, I think I hear ya, and we'll be able to.
Didn't want to lose that thought.
Turn it in English, alright.
I can send you something.
Okay, so the next one, um, review, uh, uh, review and reform the city's approach to public safety to ensure racial justice and work toward a safer and more livable community for all.
What do you want to do there?
Um, so I added a couple of quick things, so update council resolution twenty seventeen forty-five, establishing goals and priorities for the Tacoma Park Police Department. Um, review, explore and put into place appropriate changes recommended by the reimagining public safety task force. Um, and, uh, those recommendations, just for context for folks, originally there were fifty recommendations, five zero. So, um, so that's enough.
Well, I, well, I was gonna say, some of that's already happened.
Some of, a lot of it has already happened.
Can we say, continue to do it, or, or remaining changes, remaining, remaining recommendations or something? Cause it, it makes it sound like, in fact, the bulk of those recommendations, we have reviewed.
Yep.
And many of them have been adopted.
Yep, we can say continue.
What did we have before?
Okay.
Oh, we only had the one before, and you've added a second one, okay. Um, and that's something, updating that resolution is something that the police chief has asked for.
He's asked for it.
Just letting everybody know in case y'all forgot.
Which one was that?
The, the public safety one, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely, very good.
Alright, um, improve service delivery and reduce administrative burden by updating internal policies, IT infrastructure and software. Now, this may be a question for city staff, I know that we have a lot of IT systems and things that are underway. Um, and the strategy was assess resources required to update the city's systems, support the purchase of tools to facilitate cross-departmental collaboration. Um, I know that we're in the process of implementing those tools, but is it a priority for us to continue to focus on? And we've heard a lot of issues with systems, so, um, I'm, I kept it in because I, I recognize the importance of it.
It, it is important to keep in, a lot of, um, staff time is devoted to, um, what I would consider, uh, unnecessary manual processes that in, uh, I guess modern organizations are automated in a lot of ways. You're right, Mayor, there are some of the systems that we, I'm, I'm thinking particularly the HRIS system, um, that HR is implementing, is going to address a lot of that, um, but there are still systems in other departments. Um, IT comes to mind, I'll say, uh, IT slash, uh, city clerk's office, um, records management, which could be drastically improved. Um, we will soon need to start thinking about a, an updated finance system. There's also a need for an updated software in HCD to manage our rent stabilization process. So generally, the answer is yes, I think there should be a priority that addresses that.
Okay.
Is it assessing, assessing what's required, or do we know what's required and we just need to start doing it? Or continue doing it?
That's a good question, I don't think it's as, an assessment, uh, I think we know what needs to happen and where. Uh, in a lot of ways, it's a matter of cost and timing.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of, a lot of those softwares, particularly finance, um, is very expensive.
Very expensive, yes, I remember this discussion last year.
Identify and allocate resources, something like that?
Allocating and identifying resources are, are, is good language.
Cause then we would have to do it.
Mm-hmm. Alright, that's helpful. Alright, y'all, we're almost there, um. I tried to address council member Siemens' point, um, in this goal of ensuring the city of Tacoma Park is a great place to work, um, with a strategy to update and implement HR pro, um, policies and procedures that address matters such as evaluations, telework policies, I know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, conduct follow-up actions based on the results from the city's recent wage study and organizational assessment. And I will tweak that desired outcome, cause it is horrible.
Positivity.
It is bad, but this is what happens when you try to type.
Thank you very much for doing all this.
Okay, we still have one last one, but I think this one should be pretty smooth. Nope. Alright, so, community development and improved and equitable quality of life. So, the first goal, ensure that a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, stable, green and energy efficient and stable, like, the stable is twice, we'll get rid of that. And energy efficient housing options are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the community. Um, so the strategies relate to implementing the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, um, specifically continue to build partnerships with nonprofit foundations, financial institutions, um, I should just say the county, state and the state, um, and other outside entities to expand affordable housing options in the city. Explore the needs of and create programs to assist common ownership communities. Um, revise sections of the housing code, including sections on rent stabilization. Um, review and make changes to the home stretch down payment assisted program aimed at expanding eligibility. Develop a formal policy and criteria related to payment in lieu of ta, um, taxes program. Continue collaboration and coordination of the city's housing and sustainability staff on key projects to meet council goals. And then review staffing levels necessary to implement the housing and economic, the housing and economic development strategic plan. So, the one thing that I will say is, based on some of the cross-pollination that was mentioned in the, um, in goal three around environmental, it was like sustainability staff, working with staff from all over departments, um, we may not need to repeat the, that, um, the.
Yeah, at the time, we decided that we wanted to put it in both places to make sure it was interchangeable.
Yeah. It was happening.
Um, but it is happening, so.
Encourage it, huh.
Uh, you know, that's why I changed it to continue, but I don't, I don't.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with keeping it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm wondering about review staffing levels, cause we did that, and is that still something we need to do again? Or, I'm looking at our housing manager. Last bullet on strategies there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that's probably a, not just a, a goal for.
Not just a one time, yeah.
Well, just not necessarily a goal for anything related to housing and economic development.
Right, that too.
The review of staffing levels is probably something that's necessary across the organization.
Yeah, so maybe we.
We can take it out, and then we have the wage study and the organizational assessment under the other items, so we would just make sure to add review staffing levels here.
That's good, that's good.
Does the review of staffing levels help fall into what we call Terry's one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what we were just saying.
Alright.
Okay.
You're, you're ahead of me.
And, and are these still the housing strategies that we want to pick out of the, did you think about that?
I did, and yes.
Then what, then what? But I'm good, somebody thought about it.
I did, and yes.
It wouldn't have to be me.
Um, these are the big ones.
Yep, okay.
Um, we added transportation, so improve transportation planning and outreach to create a safer, more environmentally sustainable and more racially and economically equitable community for all residents, including pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicle occupants. And so, the items here, adopt Division Zero Initiative. Um.
Yeah.
Examine potential components such as education outreach, policy changes and infrastructure improvements. Work with, um, S H A to address safety at dangerous intersections as identified by, um, Montgomery County, um, predictive safety analysis and Tacoma Park Police data. Advocate for transportation improvements that impact Tacoma Park residents throughout region, um, through regional collaboration and coordinated efforts. Advocate for transportation improvements that impact Tacoma Park residents throughout region, um, through regional collaboration and coordinated efforts. Including on Purple Line, safety, and transit access. And, um, and then the last goal is, uh, plan and prepare for development in the city and region. While maintaining the special character and economic and racial diversity of Tacoma Park. Um, strategies, implement the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan specifically. Provide support for small businesses, especially those impacted by Purple Line construction. Explore options for providing support services, including through, oh no, I kept that, um.
What did you mean?
Uh, direct assistance and partnerships for businesses located outside, oh no, we want to keep that. Um, yeah, nope, this is right. Explore options for providing support services, including through direct assistance and partnerships for businesses located outside of existing business associations. Yep, so that, no, we wanted to keep that. Yep, attract new businesses to Tacoma Park and facilitate the growth of existing businesses, particularly those that help meet workforce development and local ownership goals. Um, and then develop both public and private stakeholders to, leverage both public and private stakeholders to accomplish the goal of developing the rec center. That meets the, um, city's needs for recreation, um, services, and affordable housing. Um, complete the minor master plan process for, um, Washington Adventist area of the city. In partnership with local residents and stakeholders across and around the planned area, and with the county and others, we'll clarify that, we'll make that, we'll streamline that. Um, and then coordinate with the county on planning, zoning, and development issues affecting the city.
Yep, that's the one we talked about last week.
Yep. Okay, and then that is it. And we still are done before eleven thirty. Are there any?
Questions?
If you want.
If I, if I, there are a couple of things I, I offered to work on, and you're.
You might as well, Councilman.
Minor edits, uh, is this document available so that I can make the changes to it?
Yes, I will, um, put out, I will send the document out.
Okay, call it Talisha's?
I'm sorry.
Talisha's version.
I'll, I'll send it out, um, and, uh, for everyone to take a, take a look at and provide any edits. It, it, it might be helpful at this stage of the game, um, I'm trying to think of a shared document is going to be more difficult. Than you all just sending me your individual edits, I would prefer to just receive your individual edits at this time.
So make a copy of yours and then put edits in it?
Mm-hmm, and then just send me your markup. The, uh, uh, I'll send it out tonight, if folks can get me your feedback by Saturday. And then that way, um, I can follow up with you all on any, any items so we can finalize a version that can go out for everyone's review.
And then the process is that that will be looked at by senior staff, and it'll be available for resident.
Yep, so this version will be made available, we'll, I'll have, um, Irma make sure that this version that we talked through tonight. Is posted on the city website, just so that folks are, are aware. Um, and then the next version, um, to give folks a little bit of time to make edits. Um, I'm, I'm gonna try really hard, y'all make it easy on me. Um, to get the revised version ready to go for posting by Monday, so I really need those edits. And I really need it tight, um, in your markup. And then, um, from there, we also, because we ultimately will need to do a resolution, I'll follow up with staff. We may need to add another meeting on this, just to, or add this to another agenda.
Resolution, yeah, can we crib from the one from last?
Oh yeah, the resolution isn't the problem, I just want to make sure that this thing is ready to go. Um, so that we can go ahead and have the package ready, so that we can at least get ready to, to vote on the resolution. So again, I'm sending it out now, and if folks can just, you know, send me your markup by Saturday, that would be great.
So, if I might, Talisha, uh, uh, Mayor, then we send our edits in, that's what we're proposing, but, you know, do we then? Quite, will we, will we discuss it one more time before we vote? Or, yeah, when, how does, how does it finalize?
Yeah, because I, we can't edit for forever, so, once you all send me your stuff, um, then I'll need to do the reconciliation.
Yeah.
And then, um, we will, um, have a version for every, for folks to review. If there are, if there's still lots of discussion that needs to happen, what I may have to do to move us along is we do a vote by item. Which is not fun, which I, I would prefer for us to get to a point where we have something, and, and if you need to talk to your colleagues. And, and get this stuff tight, but now, honestly, is not the time to add a whole bunch of new stuff. So, try to work within the bounds of what is here. Um, and try to make sure that you're, um, that you're considering language that's included in other sections. I know folks kind of focused on, on their sections, and if you need to have conversations with your colleagues, just to make sure you kind of understand where everyone is on an item. That would be extremely helpful. Um, my hope is that we at least would have a, a clean version that you all can take a look at by Monday, and we're just dealing with a couple of little friendly amendments. And not, um, have to go through this and do another line by line.
Is it, you just said, now is not the time to add amendments. Do you feel like it's an okay time to still discuss pulling out any strategies, or do you want to stay away from doing that? It's okay?
Yep, pulling things out is okay, I just ask for, now that we had to go through this, so everyone would kind of know who, who added what, who did what. Um, it would be great if you all, if you want some things that are moved out, if they're your own, I will take a shortening of this document. Um, but if it is something that you would suggest removing that someone else suggested, I just want to encourage everyone to do professional courtesy and reach out to them. Um, just to kind of talk through to see whether or not there's a, a workable solution.
And, uh, Mayor, seriously, in, in terms of resident feedback, just so residents are clear, I know very few people are probably listening at this hour, but. Uh, so we understand, what's the process for, I don't know, if, if we get a bunch of feedback on something and we think maybe some, some tweaks or changes need to be made. When does that happen?
So we don't have a centralized resident feedback process for our priorities.
Okay, I see, okay, okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, so if you, if you've shared, um, the draft, or you receive comments from your residents, and you can figure out a way to easily, um, incorporate them. Um, definitely, if there's small tweaks here and there, um, great. But if it requires adding fifteen new priorities and fifteen new goals, no. We're, we're past that point. Okay, alright, any other, I'm still trying to get us out by eleven thirty. Other questions, thoughts, concerns? Alright, well, thank you all so much for bearing with me, um, and so, seeing no more lights? Alright, I think we're going to call this meeting adjourned. I moved to adjourn this one.